To the January 12, 2010, City Council, special meeting of the City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could I hear your report, please?
If you would allow me to read the roll. Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero. And Mayor Prottemp Friedman.
Here.
The report is that the agenda for the January 12, 2010, special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 7, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. That and before you today is the Director of Community Planning regarding proposed residential window replacement, draft design guidelines, and possible enforcement options for properties with replacement windows installed without a permit. At 2A is a motion directing staff.
Thank you. And we are going to be breaking this meeting basically into two sections. The first section, we're going to hear a staff report about the different suggestions for the new guidelines for window replacements. We're then going to have council questions. Then after that, we're going to be hearing from Neighborhood Services about the different options for enforcement. We will then have council comments and questions, and after that, we will hear from the public. So with that, I'm going to go to our Director of Planning, Hassan Hagani.
Thank you very much, Madam Prottemp. Thank you very much for also outlining this, the way that the presentation will go. Jay Platt is going to present the first piece of the report, and for you and everybody else who might be watching this at home, there is a workbook, there's a worksheet at the end of the staff report, and we ask you to please refer to that. The staff presentation will follow the same sequence so that you can take notes and ask questions. The subtopics are rather complicated. And at the end of today, we're asking you to give us direction. We're not asking you to adopt anything. Based on the direction you give us, we will finalize the final recommendation and we'll come back to you in the future. With that, I'll ask Jay Platt to start. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Prottemp and council members. I'm sure you remember last July, the Planning Department came here and presented a very detailed report about the procedures that we use to review windows when people come to us with applications to install new windows, and also to legalize windows that were installed without permits. At that time, we went over our current procedures and gave you an overview of the proposed guidelines that we'll be discussing today. And I wanted to remind you that the procedures that we've been operating under for the last several years were all kind of developed in accordance with the principles and the guidance of the Design Review Boards, who had two study sessions in 2006 that gave us kind of the framework for how we were looking at windows. The guidelines we're looking at today are kind of an extension of that, in many ways, continuing some of the same policies, but what they do is put into writing, in a way that we haven't had until now, guidelines that are going to give a lot of clarity to both the public and to staff as we're reviewing these applications. You've heard from a lot of members of the public to date. You have people on one side saying, "We don't want any kind of design review for windows." You have people on the other side saying, "We want all windows to be reviewed as if the entire city were a historic district." It's safe to say that the policy or the procedures that we're looking at in the guidelines are kind of hewing a path somewhere between those positions. The goal of our guidelines is to allow homeowners to replace existing windows. We're not preventing people from changing out windows, from putting in thermal glass to get energy savings, but we want to do that in a way that makes sure that the new windows' design is appropriate to the appearance of the house. What we're going to do is provide guidance for applicants, and we're going to put predictability into the process that we've been, we've heard from the public that they don't think there's predictability in how we review things. And now that we'll have written guidelines, we think that it's going to be a major step forward to ensure that everyone kind of understands from the beginning what we're looking for, what we can approve and what we can't approve. The basic idea we have is kind of do no harm. We want new windows to come in and not harm the appearance of a building. If the building has already been harmed by previous inappropriate additions, or, I mean, window installations, we want to kind of work back from there and make something better, but we're not necessarily looking to take things out and restore the house to its original condition. And I say "house" because these are residential design guidelines, I should have mentioned up front. The guidelines only will apply to windows that are visible from the street. We're going to be asking for your concurrence on a bunch of issues, and that's what the workbooks that you have are for. I'll get to that in a minute. Typically, we're looking most carefully at the front facade, at the windows that directly face the street, but a lot of side facades are also visible, especially when there's a driveway running along the side of the house. And we are asking you if you want us to look at those windows as carefully as we look at the front windows, with more lenience possibly on the side facades. Possibly, you would say, "Don't look at the side facades at all," and that's part of the process we'll have today. If a window proposal does meet the guidelines that we're developing, staff will be able to issue permits for the new window installations. If the owner wants to install windows at visible openings that aren't going to meet the guidelines, we're going to be able to say, "Staff cannot write a permit for you. We're sorry." We can work with you to find a way that we can write a permit, but if we can't come to a solution that we're both accepting, or that you can accept, and that meet our guidelines, we're going to have to say that the applicant is going to have to go to the Design Review Board to get a permit for their windows, or to ask if they can install the windows they're looking at. The guidelines are divided into four primary sections, and this is kind of a public education process as well as guidelines. We want to make sure everyone understands why we're doing this in the first place. The first section talks about why we're doing design review for windows, how it fits into the city's overall design review policy. The second section is looking at the types of windows and the types of buildings to find out what window is appropriate for which house. We kind of have, in our experience over the years, we've looked at kind of buildings that are more traditional in style, or buildings that are more contemporary in style, and it seems there's a split that came somewhere around World War II, just after the war, in terms of the more traditional window types that are in the earlier homes, and the more modern kind of flush-mounted types. And I'll show you slides and go through all of that. But the guidelines are going to kind of make that clear to everyone. We're also going to determine what type of window and the installation method is appropriate. So we're going into a great level of detail. We have a lot of applicants come in, or we have the window installers themselves coming in. So we have people who really know their stuff about windows, and we want to make sure that we're telling them, like, "We can approve this type of frame, we can't approve this type of frame in this installation." So it gets a little bit technical, but the goal of the guidelines is to make that clear for anyone who's reading them. And then finally, in the guidelines, we're telling people, "What do we need? If you're coming to us with an application for windows, what are the materials that we need to process your application?" So if you turn to the workbook that we've given you, there are 13 line items that kind of cover most of the second part of the guidelines we're proposing. And we did this because we really need feedback from council to know, "Are we going in the right direction? Do you want us to look at the entire visible part of the building, or do you just want us to look at the front facade, not the side facades? Are there some things where you might have different ideas?" So if you feel like it and want to follow along, it's going to be very useful for us to get direct feedback on those specific issues. There's another issue that has recently come up that we didn't include in the slide presentation, so I just wanted to give it to you now. If you think about it and could give us feedback on that also, you can think of it as number 13. I think there are 12 on the list, so this would be number 13. The issue is when someone comes to us for an application to install, you know, three windows, we look at the house and we see, "Well, they have eight windows that are visible from the street, and some of those look like they're not probably windows that were installed with permits." The question for us is, can we just work on what they're applying for, the three windows on one side of the house? Or when we find out that the windows, we'll pull the permits and check on these other ones. If we find out that those weren't installed with permits, should we expand our review to ensure that there's consistent kind of design across the entire visible part of the house? And that's come up several times, especially recently, we've just had a few, and thinking about this hearing, we wanted to make sure that you were considering that. So unless you have any questions on the kind of the structure of the guidelines in the beginning here, I'd like to show some slides, kind of walking you through these things. They're broken down according to the worksheet items to hopefully make that go smoothly. And here we go. The first question we have for you, should we only be looking at visible windows? The historic district guidelines allow any kind of window to be put on a non-visible facade, so we didn't want the citywide guidelines to be any more stringent than we have in our historic districts. So what we've heard from the people who are concerned about the appearance of windows in our neighborhoods is, we want, they want us to be looking at the visible windows. We wanted your confirmation of that. The second point, can the lights be brought down a little more? Thank you. There is kind of a design hierarchy in general in the architecture of Glendale. Usually, the front facades are given the most prominence. They have the most architectural detailing, they often have the finest materials. This isn't always true, of course. We have some homes where the level of detail extends all the way around to the back, but we do have many where we're focusing more on street facades, and we have side facades that are either very close to the lot line, have vegetation in the way, or kind of down driveways where you see them only at kind of an oblique angle rather than dead-on, like from the street. So here's an example of a house that we recently gave permits to. The owners did a fantastic job replacing their front casement windows on this kind of French revival-style house with true-divided-light wood casement windows with thermal glass in them, so they have all the energy efficiency and ratings of the thermal glass. But on the side facade, we allowed them to install the vinyl windows, some of which were actually Z-bar windows, which you've heard us talk about before, and we'll go into more. The Z-bar windows were modified to fit into the existing frames. This is the kind of situation where we're looking at kind of maybe looking at differential treatment. If someone's really putting a lot of effort onto a well-designed front facade, and we have more of a plain kind of stucco side facade, we felt that this was a good trade-off in terms of getting, putting the money up front where everyone can see it, and still doing a nice job installing the vinyl windows on the side, but not doing it in a way that was harming the appearance of the house. That's number two. We've identified, you know, a series of things. We looked at all the windows that come to us, and we said, "What are the essential qualities of these windows?" And we've brought it into a list that you'll be seeing here of several essential aspects, the placement of the window, whether the window has grids or not, that, you know, we've kind of pulled out, and it's kind of a puzzle or a balancing act, juggling all of these different aspects to get the right kind of window. What it does do is allow us to have the flexibility to look at different conditions and different types of homes and make determinations based on that. One of the key things that I alluded to before is, windows in Glendale are usually either recessed or they're flush-mounted. Recessed windows usually are pre-war windows, but they often are post-war windows. Flush-mounted windows are almost always after the war, and they give a very different appearance to the building. One of our goals would be to retain that placement. If someone has a home with recessed windows, we'd want to see recessed windows put back in. If someone has flush-mounted windows, we'd like to see flush-mounted windows installed. And here's where we're talking about some of the technical details. What we found through the different manufacturers making all types of windows, from vinyl to fiberglass to aluminum, is you have different frame types that you're going to be installing inside the window opening. And what we found is the type they make called the block frame is the one that's appropriate for the recessed windows because it allows the new window to sit inside the window opening and to have that kind of recess that gives the sense of depth and shadowing and texture that some of the older homes have. For the flush windows, there's something called the nail-in frame, which requires the stucco to be removed from around the window, the new frame to be installed, and then the stucco to be applied around the edges. A lot of people really like this because they see it as a very weather-tight approach for windows. And these are the two frame types that we would, with your approval, be recommending when someone comes to us to replace a recessed or a flush window. Your fourth item is a condition that we have a lot coming in. We have older homes that once had recessed windows that now have flush-mounted windows. We look at it, all of our staff has been trained on this, and we know that's not the original window condition. Many people in the community complain that this is one of the big problems that they're seeing, these flush-mounted windows on some of the older housing stock. One of the things we'd like you to consider is whether we should actually ask the owners to remove these windows if they're in violation, or if they're coming to us for a permit, we would approve a new recessed window in these locations. What that would require is a little bit of extra work on the owner's part to rebuild the sill in the frame. And this is one of the places you might want to consider, whether this is something we should do just at front facades or both the front and the side facades, because there is that added expense going in for rebuilding the frame and the sill. But we think just that alone is going to bring back some of the character-defining features that we see in the older houses with the recessed windows. The fifth item is to retain or restore the window-opening configuration. We're using the word "configuration" to look at, the window at the top left is a three-part window, which is a very traditional style. The one at the top right is two windows in separate openings. The one below that is a pair of windows in a single opening with a wood mullion between the two windows. And these are very typical conditions. When we see them, if someone comes to us and they don't have a violation, and we see one of these conditions, we would try to allow the new windows to maintain this. If someone had a violation and took out something like this and came to us, we'd say, "Well, we think that, we know the configuration on certain types of houses might be the three-part configuration based on the size of the opening, or a two-part based on the proportions of the facade." So we would work with the applicants to kind of bring that appearance back. Picture on the lower left is a steel casement window. We're finding we have a lot of homes and apartment buildings that have these steel casements, and in many cases, they wrap the corner of the house, which is a really important detail that's easily lost. And this is kind of one of the trickiest things, we'll talk about a little bit more later, for us to deal with replacement windows, because it's hard to maintain the very thin proportions and the glassy sightlines of these steel windows, but we found some solutions that we think are going to work pretty well. I added window operation as number 5A because I neglected to put it in your worksheet, but this is about window operation, whether the windows, the up-and-down kind of windows, the double-hung windows, the casement windows that swing inside or outside, or the sliding windows. And what we found is when you have a recessed opening, they always had traditionally either a double-hung window or a casement window. Flush-mounted openings are almost always sliding windows, and the goal would be to maintain that kind of operation. Although, when it comes to the double-hung or the casement, some people have very strong feelings, one way or the other, about whether they want to lift their windows or open them up. We're more or less ready to be open. If they come to us with a recessed window opening and want casement windows, unless there was some unusual aspect to the house, we'd say, "You can have either casement or double-hung window," and that gives a little more choice in the matter. As you can see from this photo, on the traditional windows, when we have sliding windows installed, even when they're installed inside the opening, as you see in this case, on a little craftsman house like this, they really take away some of the texture and the shadow and light that you get on these houses. It's really important to, the kind of rare craftsman building stock, but it's not just the craftsmen's, it's pretty much any of the traditional openings. We have problems on the front facades especially like that. Your sixth item is talking about the window grids. I'm sure you've heard from constituents a lot about this issue. What we're finding is the manufacturers make something called internal grids, or internal muntens. And that's where the grid, these little lines that kind of recall the appearance of older style windows, they're sandwiched in between the two sheets of glass and the thermal glass unit. What happens is we get a lot of reflection off of it, we get an attempt to recall the appearance of an old window that doesn't work. What we're proposing in the guidelines is to either install external muntens, which is something called a simulated divided light, where you can still get the thermal glass, but you do have a mutton on the outside of the glass, or rather than have internal muntens like you see on the right, we'd rather have no muntens at all than to have something like that. So this is one of the stronger kind of viewpoints that we have in the guidelines. We're asking if we can say no to internal muntens, just as a general policy. And again, that's where you can look at whether this is just for the front facade or also on the side facades. A lot of different house styles have different types of window details around the edges, and, you know, one of the goals of the guidelines would be, if we see a house come to us that has these details, we want to keep them. If those details have been lost and we know what's appropriate for the house, that would be part of the restoration of the frame and the sill in a lot of cases. Number eight is window materials. This is probably the number-one thing you've heard from. Vinyl windows, yes. Vinyl windows, no. Vinyl windows are destroying Glendale, we want vinyl windows, and please give them to us. What we're trying to do, and this is that kind of middle line that we're trying to draw, we have found many, many good vinyl window installations in both traditional and contemporary window openings. We don't want to say no to vinyl as a blanket statement, although I know you've heard from some people who would like us to do that. What we would like to do is go through the list of appropriate materials, and these are the standard materials that are on the market right now, the wood, aluminum, aluminum-clad wood, vinyl-clad wood, and fiberglass. Those are all good materials that we can approve at staff level. Before we approve any vinyl windows, our thought is that we just make sure that the placement in the wall, the configuration of the window, all of the details we've just been talking about are met, so that then we can go ahead and say, "Yes, these vinyl windows won't look so bad." And I'll show you some examples of that in a minute. Number nine is, for some, especially in older building stock, but not necessarily, sometimes we have windows that are just very special. They represent an aspect of craftsmanship and detail that we're not going to be able to get with replacement windows. And staff is constantly seeing things like this. It's difficult to tell someone, like, "These windows are unique, they're very special in Glendale, and, you know, we're sorry, but we don't think we can help you with a permit. We need more direction from council on this." What we'd like to do is be able to say, "These special windows, when they're being replaced, at least at the front facades, would have to go to the Design Review Board." We don't have a very detailed definition of special window at this point. It doesn't mean any window that has a grid or divided lights. With your direction, we could start developing kind of a worksheet of what are special windows. It's a little bit tricky to do that, but I think for clarity, we'll have to have something like that. But I think these examples show that there's no vinyl manufacturer who's going to be coming to us, or, I shouldn't just single out vinyl, any of the new window manufacturers in any material won't be able to replicate this kind of detail, and if it's gone, it's gone forever, so that's one thing we want to consider. Z-bar is another one of the issues that we raised when we talked to you in July. You've heard from constituents about it, I'm sure. Our goal is to generally not allow Z-bar, but we'll have a few exceptions I'll go over in a second. And I think you can see from the installation on the right, Z-bar creates this kind of border around the window opening that stands out from the face of the building and really doesn't necessarily respect any of the design features on the building. So here you see an example in a relatively contemporary building, a Z-bar just kind of slapped on top of the existing wood detail work. And many people in the community are thinking these Z-bar frames are detracting from the appearance of a lot of houses. We do have a few situations, though, where we think it's working. Z-bar can be modified so that that kind of wide frame around the perimeter of the window can be cut back in some ways. And here are two examples. The one on the left I already showed you on that little French revival house, where the bottom of the Z-bar was cut so that it could, they could keep the historic sill or the sill, the existing sill that was there, and then they can insert the Z-bar frame over the opening, so that you can see it's got the perimeter frame on the top and the sides, but not at the bottom. We thought that was a successful solution here. On the right side, we have a replacement of steel casement windows, where the Z-bar was modified so that it could fit into the existing opening rather than be flush over the top of the facade. And in this case, it was a corner window. You can see that darker line, and I should say, this installation isn't finished yet, so the painting hasn't been done. Once that's done, it's going to kind of unify the appearance. But what this did was preserve the corner post that was existing there, that's a structural element of the house, but let the new, in this case, these are fiberglass windows, come in and more or less replicate the corner window appearance. But this is the tricky thing with steel windows. We haven't seen a material that's going to really recall the lines of steel windows. The idea is, if a house, if all the windows are being replaced, we're going to at least have consistent appearance that recalls that traditional steel window look. Number 12 is also the Z-bar issue, and what we've been finding is that we do have a number of buildings, a lot of apartment buildings from the '60s and '70s, some houses in some cases, we have facades, usually side facades, but we've seen, even seen a few at front facades, where there's just no architectural detailing at all. It's just a plain stucco box. And in those cases, when we were kind of talking back and forth, trying to figure out what the right thing to do was, we were like, "What is the benefit of asking someone to put in a flush-mounted window in a situation like that when there's really nothing else going on? In fact, it might even harm the appearance of the house because when they redo the stucco, it doesn't always look perfect." So we thought on some of these very plain stucco-box kind of buildings, we would probably be, we would like to be able to allow Z-bar. With your direction, we would do that either just at the side facades or possibly at front facades, if staff had discretion to consider the different options. That's it for the issues that are on your workbook that we're asking for a specific direction on. I just wanted to finish by showing a couple of slides, showing the kind of this-not-that kind of way that we're using the guidelines. We have hit, you know, four different installation types that we are, that are the most common that we see. So the installation in an existing wood-framed opening. On the left, you have a vinyl window that went into an existing opening. The wood frame and sill were kept, the new vinyl window was installed. On the right, you have a window opening that once had a wood sill and frame that was taken out, and the new flush-mounted window was put in. The goal would be to have all new installations going into existing recessed openings maintain that kind of recess. When we have altered openings, which is something we see a lot of violations with requests for legalization coming in, we are striving to get people to rebuild kind of a sense of depth when there was a recessed window. The example at the top, not the best example I could have put in, but I didn't have lots of good photos of some of the other ones, because that's kind of a stone sill that someone put in rather than a wood sill, but it gives the idea that it is possible, and people sometimes desire, to put in new windows that actually do have that recess. The lower example is something that we would not be looking for. And then finally, when you have these flush-mounted windows in more contemporary structures, we would want the flush mount to maintain, be retained, but we wouldn't necessarily want it to look like this. This is a picture of an older '60s aluminum sliding window. New aluminum or sliding windows of any other material have a heavier-looking frame, they're never going to look like this, but they'll maintain the sense of being flush with the surface, and the surface of the building being like the skin that kind of wraps around the exterior. What we're trying to avoid is an example where you have this kind of frame around the window.
What, did you say the one on the right is bad?
The one on the, for this example, it's bad. It's the one that we were also saying, if this house had a little more detail. I looked through hundreds of photos that we've taken, and I could not find a good picture, despite having thousands of examples in the city, of a Z-bar window when I was putting this together, and I apologize for that. So that's kind of a placeholder.
Was that a Z-bar?
That's a Z-bar. The white frame around the outside is the Z-bar. And that's why we think-
There's a sill there, isn't there? I mean, there's a-
No, there's-
On the one on the right?
Is there?
Or it's shaded or something?
Shadow. I totally messed up on this slide, I apologize. This slide should not be in here, so. It was funny, though, going through, when I was trying to find a better one, I literally was looking at hundreds of pictures and couldn't find one, so I'm sorry about that. But the goal is still to keep a flush window that's kind of taut with the skin of the building, kind of flush with the exterior, rather than having something that's applied with the, with the perimeter frame around the window. And here are some successful examples, just to close, showing that in so many cases, we can approve vinyl windows, we can approve fiberglass windows, aluminum windows that are going into existing openings, and maintaining the character that I think you're hearing from at least some of your constituents, that they're trying to maintain and that we're trying to kind of work on through these guidelines to preserve, so.
Upper left is example of a new window that's-
Yeah.
-good?
It's not the best thing we've ever seen because the frame is so heavy. This is where it's the do-no-harm kind of issue. We, if someone in 10 years says, "I don't want those windows," the window opening is still going to be there, and they can put something more appropriate in. One of the problems with almost all of the new windows is that the sightlines, the heaviness of the frames is greater than what we have, so you're getting less glass area on almost all new window installations. That wasn't the best example, but that's something that we approved at staff level. It's the kind of thing, with your approval, we will continue to approve at staff level. And I think the important thing is this idea of not making things worse, but allowing people to find ways to put in replacement windows that they're asking us for. And that is everything I have for you, if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes.
Out of all those 12 or 13 criteria-
Mm-hmm.
-does cost, cost factor in at all? I saw one of the examples is a, clearly, the lower left is a beautiful window, but I see Pella on there-
Mm-hmm.
-and I know that's a very expensive window.
Yeah, cost does not factor into our analysis, but the guidelines wouldn't prevent someone from putting in, you know, a less costly window. And that's kind of why we want your direction to say, "Yes, we can install, we can approve vinyl windows," because vinyl windows realistically are often one of the less expensive windows. And it's up to the applicant ultimately. The cheapest vinyl window, the quality is usually not very good. Expensive vinyl windows can be very high-quality, and in the same way-
On that double-hung window on the lower left-
Mm-hmm.
-is that a wood window, I presume? —is that a wood window, I presume?
Yeah, that's a wood—I—I believe that's a simulated divided light wood window.
So what sort of option? Let's say—let's say that's my house.
Mm-hmm.
I wish it was my house, but let's say it's my house. And I—the original window is deteriorated, and we haven't gotten into the restoration. That perhaps is a separate part of our discussion. And I see a Pella window, and—I mean, I'm not a contractor, but that's probably—I don't know, $1,000 for that window or more? I mean, I—I don't know, I'm guessing. Are there any alternatives to that than than a Pella?
Sure. If so, if someone came to us and said, "I have a block frame vinyl window that costs $300, $500, whatever it would be, as long as it's a block frame window that can be installed inside the opening." So it's—instead of having what you see at the bottom, it would be more like what you see at the top. What we would be gaining is we're—we still have the window opening, we still have the frame and the sill. We're not affecting the overall appearance of the house, just kind of of the sightlines of the window itself. And if they wanted grids on the window, we would say, "You need to put the external grids on, the simulated divided light." There are various cost options for doing that. You can have the grid just on the outside of the glass. You can also put it on the—in—on the outside of the glass. You can put it on the inside so it looks from the inside as good as it does from the outside. That does add some cost, but that's not a huge cost. The grids aren't the biggest cost for these windows.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Drayman.
I have a odd question. Can you go back to the z-bar image you had up? That one?
My bad. Image?
On the—on the left side of the screen—
Mm-hmm.
—just to the right of the window. What is that?
Looks like a—
An air conditioner?
Looks like it might be an AC unit, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver, any questions?
At this time, we're getting three or four iterations.
All right.
We'll save and I'll comment at the end.
Okay.
I just have two quick questions, one sort of a housekeeping question. After we finish this process and you come back to us again, is it going back to the planning commission, or what's the process from here?
On the guidelines, we'll probably go through the design review boards and get their comments for you, and we'll come to you. If you'd like us to take them to the planning commission, we could, but it's not necessary. And with the code enforcement options, we can come back directly to you.
Okay, thank you. So I want to clarify for people who are here or people watching at home that this is one of an ongoing process. This is a study session. We're not making decisions today. We're going to be giving some guidance and certainly hearing from the public. There'll be other—it'll be going in front of the design review boards and coming back to us. So if for some reason you weren't able to make it today and are watching this on a rerun, you'll have time to comment. This is not the end of the line. The other question I have is, under your proposal, if an applicant comes in and just totally disagrees with you for whatever reason, do they still have the option to go to the design review board and plead their case?
At any point, they could go to the design review board. We haven't encountered that, but it's a possibility.
It's possible. So staff's decision's not necessarily final.
Oh, never.
Some would include if they decided that they—for whatever reason, they—they have a board—a place they can go.
Yeah, that—that's always been the case.
One more question, I'm sorry. Let's go back to the first slide, Slide 1.
Slide, the blank slide?
We talk about visible.
Is—oh, good.
Okay, now, is that a term of—
This shows visible.
Is that a term of art that we're using? Or is this the common definition of the word?
This would be the common definition. From the public way, from the sidewalk in front of the house, can I see the window? And—
Okay, there are some homes—
And we—and we do, in many cases, or in most cases, we pretend that a bush is not there, because that bush is not always going to be there. So—
Okay, there are some homes—
But if there's a permanent structure like a fence—
So landscaping is not—
Landscaping—
Not count?
Yeah. There might be some special situation where we might—if it were an oak tree, yeah.
There's a house, beautiful house, at the corner of Mountain called Homeland.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the right name of it?
Yeah.
It's got the beautiful—and I can never—I'm always craning my neck to see what that house looks like—
Mm-hmm.
—because you can never really see it. And are you familiar with that?
Yeah, it's on the Glendale Register.
I think there's a—think there's a wall with a—
Yeah, there's a gate, and you can see—it's a little bit of it.
So aside from the historic issues and being on the register and on all those other things, would that be a visible facade?
No. And we—and we have, especially in some of the hillside developments, especially '60s and '70s, mainly '60s, it seems, but we have a lot of homes where, you know, you really have to go up a driveway to get to the house, and you can't see anything, or you might see a little corner of it. We're using common sense when we're thinking visibility. If you really can't see it, we're not going to pretend we're in a helicopter or—and—and it's also not if it's visible from across, you know, on the other side of the valley if you can see it, so. It's really in front of the house on the street, so. There could be—I have to say, there could be a situation where a house has, you know, two frontages and, you know, through block lot, and then we would look at the, you know, the backside of the house possibly as a visible facade.
Thank you, Mr. Platt.
Thank you.
So who's next?
Sam Engel. Just going to go over the code enforcement options.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedman, members of the City Council. Our part of the report deals with possible strategies to deal with the implementation of whatever guidelines you ultimately adopt. First, I want to point out that regardless of whatever design review requirements are there, replacing windows has always required a building permit. Doing this work without obtaining a building permit is a violation of the Building and Safety Code, which for us is either the California Building Code or formerly, before that, was the Uniform Building Code. This is nothing new, and this city has enforced these provisions for many, many years. Until design review was applied to window changeouts, this was pretty much a routine process for us, whereby the owner had to show that the windows were installed in conformance with the requirements of the Building and Safety Code and that the windows themselves met the requirements for efficiency, heat transfer, egress, and all the other things spelled out in the code. With design review, the problem is that the windows are subject to that new additional form of local review, and that is compatibility, which is what Jay just talked to you about. That criteria has resulted in window installations which might otherwise meet the Building and Safety Code requirements being rejected on the design criteria. Regardless of whatever guidelines you decide for your design process that you're reviewing, those building and safety requirements do not change unless you amend the Building and Safety Code. Our experience in Neighborhood Services indicates that contractors are aware of the requirement for permitting and include in their bills frequently charges for securing local permits. Unfortunately, they rarely secure these necessary permits, and unless the homeowner verifies that the permits have been secured before the final payment is made, the contractor walks away, leaving the homeowner holding the bag. This is a situation that our inspectors most frequently encounter when they respond to a complaint about illegally installed windows, which in turn then sparks a call to council members from those people who receive a citation from our inspectors. Every resident who has moved to Glendale since 2003 has received a notice walking in them to Glendale, talking about all the wonderful things about our community that very specifically says, "Are you adding a room, constructing a fence, replacing or installing doors and windows? If so, you need to obtain a building permit." This goes out every week to everybody who turns on a utility account in the city of Glendale and has since 2003. We've prepared a series of enforcement options which correspond to the varying levels of enforcement the council may ultimately choose to use whenever dealing with the issue of windows. These options are delineated in full detail in the report, and I'm going to go through them and summarize them real briefly. Option 1 kind of deals with establishing a benchmark. That is, where are we now at this point in time? Takes a snapshot of the community and says, "These are the windows that have been changed out prior to whatever date we do this, or dates. It's going to take us probably several months to do this," and says, "All right, these are the ones that were permitted because a substantial number of those were done legally." A substantial number of those were not done legally, but it sets forward what those are. What we think is a nice thing about doing that survey at some point, even though it's very staff-intensive, is it does level the playing field for those people who actually did the right thing. You find out who they are, got the permits and so forth, and it tells you who the ones are that didn't do that. Option 2 takes option 1 to the next step, and that is determining who passes and who fails on this. Are there amnesty for certain people? Is there not amnesty for certain people? And we'd ask for direction on council relative to option 2, relative to what we find out on this—on this survey. Option 3 takes it a step further than that. Do you want to grant amnesty for those particular homeowners that may have bought a piece of property where the previous owner may have done the work? Option 4 takes it to a little bit more degree of severity, and that is, you may not want to compel that owner to do that, but at some point in time, you may want to compel the owner to make whatever change you decide. And that is using what's called the Notice of Zoning Non-Compliance, which then says at some point, you can compel the owner to make these changes in—in return for releasing that notice. That—that requirement actually is in place with the Building and Safety Code, and we're required to do that in the Building and Safety Code for work done without permits on a residential structure. This then puts that requirement in place for those parts of our code that are zoning-related. Option 5 is a—what's called a point-of-sale inspection, and I want to talk about that a little bit in particular. One of the things that we find out, and I think the tragedy that you have seen when this whole issue comes up, when a recent homeowner finds out that a previous homeowner snookered them on the property when they bought it, leaving them holding the bag for unpermitted improvements on the property—for windows, room conversions, garage conversions, a variety of different things. What should be a joyous time for a new homeowner celebrating a purchase turns out to be one that is just overwhelming for them when they find out that a bunch of these things just they did not know about. Over the past year, you have heard numerous horror stories in this regard. My concern is these—this situation has all tried to paint the city as the villain in this drama. Option 5 kind of ends this game and does what the disclosure requirement in California real estate law has failed to do: to bring to light the deficiencies on the property at the time of the sale so that the buyer and the seller can sort this out themselves and not leave the city responsible for dealing with this after the fact, or the neighbors to deal with it at some later time. I'd like to ask the council to think how many fewer complaints with this particular issue you would have heard if unsuspecting buyers had actually been able to make knowing purchases, knowing what the violations were on a particular piece of property before they bought the property. Because this option eliminates the city from that transaction, places responsibility back on the seller, this is one that staff has put forward for you to consider. Let's go back up to option 6. This kind of deals with enforcement. Right now, we have an enforcement policy in Neighborhood Services, and it comes back to direction that we've received from the City Council, and that is not to—we use the term pile-on enforcement. Every time the inspector goes out, he adds another violation, that they do what's called comprehensive inspections. If they're out to deal with a particular violation, they deal with everything that they're able to observe rather than adding things on. What this option 6 does is says, "With regard to windows, because it's so sensitive, unless we've received a complaint from the neighbors, unless we have observed it under construction"—I listed these out for you—"unless it comes up in regard to another permit that person is trying to obtain, we're not going to add window violations on to what would be observed inspections for the inspector out there dealing with other things." So that's an option that you might want to consider as well. When we have the opportunity to sit down and review all of these things, I think we can really come up with something that I think will work and really deal with problems, I think, that unfortunately have had to come to the council way too often at this point. We're ready for your direction when you're ready to discuss this and wait to hear what we want to do. Thank you.
Mr. Engel, are there any questions from the council? Mr. Weaver?
Sam said that the window—permits for windows are according to the code for safety-related issues?
Title 13, which is energy. Safety has to do with egress. There are tempered glass requirements and certain things. So the Building and Safety Code requirement for permits is always going to be there regardless of your design.
The safety is because of the type of glass?
A bunch of different things. Well, one, you've got to be able to get in and out of a bedroom window, for example, as a secondary means of escape.
Most windows do open.
But if they're too high, if they're too small, and what hap— And a good example of this is a double-hung window that gets replaced with a slider. The width of the opening is no longer legally wide enough in many cases for somebody to be get at—to get out the window, and that's part of the problem. That's one of the things they check, one of the reasons why they check for permits.
It's always been—
It's always been.
—code.
Always been in the code.
Mr. Drayman.
That doesn't go away—excuse me—regardless of what your design stuff comes up.
Mr. Engel, you were talking about if—if city staff is going out to look at a—a window issue. Well, that—respecting that—that sensitivity and kind of limited windows, but what—if we look at the other options, we're talking about doing a—if we are talking about doing a city survey, what about the non-window issues? In other words, we have a city survey that is going citywide to look at windows, but isn't that also going to turn up every conceivable other—or, let's say, more obvious violation that might exist on a property in the process?
Councilmember Drayman, members of the City Council. We've done this once before, and I think it has really helped us, and I hesitate to ever bring up walls and fences unless someone brings it up first.
Well, I was headed—I was headed there, so go right ahead.
But it did give us a very effective benchmark of what was in place for walls and fences, and that's what the—the staff that did that, which was a combination of planning staff and neighborhood service staff, looked for. I'm sure they saw other things when they were out there, but they were—they were directed to look at other things, and what they came back with was, at the time, a very comprehensive database of what was out there in terms of walls and fences. I think you could probably do the same thing for windows. With—and I'm going to give you a caveat, because I think there's one thing we would never direct—or that we would never direct staff to do, and that would be to overlook what would be an obvious health and safety issue. And I would expect that they would report those.
Well, so, for example, we're looking at windows and the person that—that happens to walk out to say, "Hello, Sam, you're here to look at our windows," happens to walk out of a garage apartment. And I suspect that—that we all—all are aware, without necessarily any specificity, that Glendale has a lot of garage apartments that are out there.
Some of which are legal, some are not.
Right.
Yeah. Without—I—I think we'd have to sit down and go through that as we came down with it and look—look to the—if—if the council were to select this as an option, to ask them, "Hey, look—looking at it purely as a resource issue, how frequently do we ever assign staff to actually take a look at the neighborhoods of the city? How—how directly do you want us to look at these things?" Because we—we can do any number of things. And then look at the resource implications of that. Like I say, we—we certainly would not want anybody to directly overlook a health and safety issue and answer your thing of a garage conversion. I'd look at that as a health and safety issue. That's not considered a habitable dwelling. So specifically answer your question.
One more question. So if you go out there, "Sam, is it exterior observations only, or do you walk through the house?" Once you walk in, you see—
My thought is, it's a drive-by inspection.
Good. You don't go into a garage and see a water heater and say, "Did you get a permit to put that water heater in?"
No. It'd be a drive-by and—
It's a safety issue.
And it—yeah, it'd be a drive-by inspection. Or walking—that—we encourage the guys to walk the neighborhoods rather than drive.
Mr. Najarian?
Sam, on—on option 2, which is a citywide window survey establishing amnesty for windows installed prior to survey date, wouldn't that necessarily require taking photographs of the house and keeping some sort of master database on what the homes looked like on July 1, 2010, or whatever that is?
Yes.
The next question is option 4, filing a notice of zoning non-compliance. Isn't that what we did with the fences? Was that—
It—it is what we did with the fences.
And it triggered many acceleration clauses on some of the mortgages and all that stuff?
Actually, it didn't trigger acceleration. Councilmember Najarian, member of the City Council, it didn't actually trigger acceleration clause on the—on the mortgages. What—what happened was, is because the rates dropped, people wanted to refinance, and when they went to refinance, they had this informational lien on title of their property. It didn't—it—it—in and of itself, it didn't trigger anything. It caused a—
Right.
—problem with—the with finance.
I stand corrected. Do you think that would be the similar situation this time? I mean, I don't know if rates are going to drop any lower than they are now, but—I mean, I heard a lot of—I took a lot of heat when we were discussing that—
Yeah.
—and I wasn't even voting on the issue. I was conflicted on it. That's just, I mean, to be honest, that's a concern I have when you start dealing with title and recording issues on there, you know, clouding title and things like that.
It is. Councilmember Najarian, member of the City Council, and the reason it is, is because it's a very effective tool that the city has the power to use. Whether or not we choose to use it, that's ultimately your decision. It's here for you to consider.
I understand. Thank you.
I have a question. In option two, which would be the citywide survey establishing amnesty for windows installed prior to the survey date, does that mean that if we were deciding that we were going to have this survey commence April 1st, that half the city could go out and replace their windows between now and April 1st, and they would all get amnesty?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Can't we set a date? We can set a date prior.
Oh, yeah.
They wouldn't be surveyed by then. Mr. Drayman, do you have a question?
Well, it was a question that orchestrates off of your question, actually, the distinction between option two and option three. In other words, I assume if there's discussion or consideration about an amnesty for owners who purchase property with pre-existing violations, in other words, that one doesn't mention the word "survey." So how do you, how do you get there? Someone simply?
You would have, you would have to do a survey. Oh, option three?
Yeah.
No, no, you wouldn't. That would be determined by the, you'd have to research every one of those people that came in and said, hey, it was like this when I bought it.
But how do they come to your attention in the first place, those people that would fall into the category of option three? Someone picks up the phone and says, hey, my neighbor, or whatever?
It would, Councilmember Drayman, member of the City Council, probably would be as in any one of those other three things, how they come to our attention. Somebody complains about it, somebody notices.
No, no, not all of them. I mean, some of them relate to a survey. You go out and do a survey, you're going to see what is what that is on the buildings. I'm saying, so this would be directly as a result of somehow or other, let's say it's my house, I don't own a house, but, so I don't think they're going to be climbing up on ladders to, well, anyway, they're the original windows, windows, windows in my condo, anyway. However, let's say I own a house, and for whatever reason, someone comes to Neighborhood Services and says, Mr. Engel, those windows are not conforming, or they're not to code, what have you. You haven't done a survey, so now what? I come in and I show you, if I'm contending that they were pre-existing windows that are not compliant, I then show you documentation to show when I, what?
One, whatever, Councilmember Drayman, member of the City Council, you'd show us when you purchased the property, and quite honestly, we'd take a look at the aerial survey of the city and see what the windows looked like at that time. We have aerial surveys of the entire city every two years for the last, what, eight years, maybe?
Show the windows.
Does that show the windows, the aerial survey?
Pretty much. At least enough for us to get a picture of whether or not that would be true.
Really? And what's going on in the living rooms of those houses?
That's scary.
What it actually, what it actually helps us with, honestly, is determining whether or not there's been an add-on or something like that, because you do get a view of the roof. You can't see, Councilmember Najarian, what's going on in the windows. It's so high. We're not, it's more to look at.
I mean, I've seen them for, when we do our planning.
Those are the ones we use.
Issues, they're.
They're the ones we use.
They're rather, you know, at least 600 feet sort of resolution. But anyway, that's a side issue.
If you're claiming that you bought a house with a certain condition, usually, most people have the photograph of the listing, or you can find the listing photograph, right?
Right. That's available to us.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Back on the inspection again, are you inspecting the windows based on safety-related issues, or a judgment call that, no, this window doesn't look right, or it's the wrong style? I can see per code, you need a permit, you go out, you survey every window in Glendale, and you're looking, you're looking at it, maybe you can tell that window isn't big enough for people to get out of, or it's the wrong kind. I can see you saying, well, there's a safety-related issue. But taking every window, the vast majority are going to be accessible in and out. Unless you're saying structurally, it's not going to stand an earthquake, so when you take this, every window, is it just to have the records, but it says in here improper amnesty to windows? So you're surveying it based on what you think looks right or doesn't look right?
Well, Councilmember Weaver, member of the City Council, I mean, ultimately, what happens is the inspectors bring that information back, and that's the coordination that happens between us, the people in planning, and the people in building and safety in this.
The staff is going to look at it from a standpoint, does it appear to be the right kind of window for the setting, not the safety?
It's not arbitrary by the inspector by any means. That's one of the huge benefits of having us all together right now. It happened before, but it's really happening now.
And if I may, they're going to look first to see if it was permitted. If it was permitted and inspected, then it doesn't go any further. So they're only looking at more carefully at the ones that were done without permit.
How many single-family homes are in Glendale?
My recollection, Councilman Weaver, is about 42,000.
So you're going to start, you're going to take pictures of, you know, say, other than going up on the hills where you can't see, you'll exempt those. The ones that can be seen, say there's 35,000, 40,000, you're going to take a picture of every house, and the staff has the time to go back and analyze every one of those, I mean, first check and see if it's permitted during the building of the house or whatever, and then develop a map, whatever. I'm just trying to understand what is, it surveys a whole city.
If I may, the option to survey the entire city, all of the residential areas, if the City Council were to opt for that direction, we would have to bring a report to you and give you a timeline and possible resources that would be expended for that and for what period of time.
It's going to be cheap.
Yes, Mr. Drayman?
And Mr. Weaver is raising an issue that I had a question about as well, and that was, he asked part of the question related to numbers involved, but the other numbers that, and you say, Mr. Agani, you'd have to bring a report back that would relate the costs, possible costs involved, and so I'm curious to know what that would be too for a citywide survey of that size, that magnitude, thousands, tens of thousands of properties.
Councilman Drayman, members of the City Council, when we did it with walls and fences, we did it over a four-month period using part staff that we had, and we deployed them for a certain number of hours every day, and they had to cover a certain part of the city, and then part, part-time staff that came on to do that, and we did that, geez, 13 years ago, it was 1997, 13 years ago. So in answer to your, in answer to your question, we'd have to sit down and say, what's the, is there a possibility of using existing staff? There may or may not be. Or would you do that all with contract staff? Or would you not want to do it at all? Ultimately, that's the discussion that's out there in front of you.
One difference, Sam, probably up and down the streets, you can see a fence, go take a picture of that. Every house has windows, so you have a lot more houses to stop at than you did for fences.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Do we have any sense of, at all, of how many illegal, unpermitted windows we think we have? What percentage of the single-family homes or apartment buildings, I guess it could be?
I think all of us are shaking our heads.
We thought we prepared for every question, and there's one, I don't know.
We actually get calls occasionally from constituents who say, well, so many windows in my neighborhood have been changed, what are you doing? We say, well, you need to give us the address, and you need to file with Neighborhood Services, because we don't initiate that kind of research. But we hear from, occasionally anecdotal comments, that a lot of them, but we don't have a sense of the numbers.
Mr. Drayman?
I'm just, I'm just playing this out in my head, and let's say we do take an aggressive, one of the aggressive enforcement options, and I've bought a house, and I receive a notice of violation for windows that were unpermitted, and the old owner never told me, and I don't even know where the old owner is, but I know where Rick Barnes is. And Rick was the, was the agent on that house, and he did not disclose it to me, and he had that little, that little brochure, and he's a realtor, he's a professional. I moved from Santa Monica, I don't know anything about Glendale. He should have inquired the way they inquire about smoke detectors and all these other things. He didn't tell me, you have E and O insurance, Rick? He does. I'm going to go sue that realtor. Don't you think this is going to open up a can of worms when we start enforcing this for those folks that have bought a home recently, or depending how we play with the amnesty issue? That's going to open up the realtors to a ton of claims against them for not inquiring. They had a duty, they had a level of expertise greater than the purchaser, the, you know, of course, they can say, well, the list, the listing, the owner never told me anything about this, but I would say you had a duty to inquire, you had a duty to check these things, because Glendale is strict on this now, and, Sam, hold off on the enforcement, I've got a lawsuit against the realtor and his broker. Do you foresee any of that happening? Because I do. And it makes sense to me. I mean, I would definitely do that. I would take that case in a second if some client came to me and said, I'm getting pursued by the city of Glendale.
Councilmember Najarian, members of the City Council, right now, those people are pursuing us. They're coming here on Tuesday nights. We had no part in that, the city of Glendale. You, I wasn't the realtor or the buyer or the seller in that transaction, assuming that nobody else in this room was. It puts, what both of these options do, amnesty gives you the ability to deal with those ones that may or may not have been handled, and point of sale gives you the ability to solve that problem at the time of sale from this point forward. It doesn't solve anything that happened in the past. One of, we get, Councilmember Najarian, members of the City Council, we get this question.
I'm not making you the bad guy.
No, 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 no.
I'm just.
We get this question all the time, is, you know, somebody wants justice, because all of a sudden they're caught with this, whether it's windows, or a garage conversion, or a family room add-on, or any one of those other things that come up after the sale. That's why we like the point of sale as a way to move, to stop this from moving forward. What we'd want in terms of windows and window policy from you is how to deal with this, and that's why those different options are there. Do you want an amnesty? Do you want us to deal with them by different levels of enforcement in the past for what's happened now, prior to this? We always tell people, we do not encourage you to sue anybody. I mean, that's part of the issue that comes up. You know, we encourage you to resolve this.
Try and cut the lawyers out of the deal, huh?
But let me ask a follow-up question, because I'm not, I'm not a realtor or an attorney. So what about the other areas where we do enforce? So let's say someone buys a house now, and there's an extra room or a third floor, do they turn around and sue the realtors? Is that something that's, that's common?
Councilwoman Friedman, member of the City Council, I don't know that. I will tell you that the new, we do hold the new owner responsible for the continuing violation that they now own.
So it's not the case then that we say, well, the realtor might get sued, so we really shouldn't tell this person to take that, that add-on, to legalize that add-on room, because they may turn around and sue their realtor?
Councilwoman.
That doesn't, does that come into the equation?
No, we don't factor that into our enforcement policy.
Why not? Okay, you don't have to answer that. Any other questions?
I guess it's Acting Mayor, Mayor Protem. There have been occasions when the matter has been referred to our office, and we begin enforcement proceedings, where we learned that the owner of a property has instituted legal action either against the prior owner and/or the realtor and their broker. Not often, but we've learned of it on a couple of occasions. So it does happen.
And do you ever, do you ever decide to just kind of let them, let it go, because they might be suing somebody else?
Depending on the circumstances, if it's a, if it's a high-cost item, for example, and they don't have the resources to do it, in the past, we might give them some time to resolve the case, to see if they'll be able to settle it and receive the money to be able to make the improvements. Now, we would not.
Anyone else have any other questions before we go on?
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. We have nothing until six, so.
Full session.
However, I'm, I want to be, I want to have in, you know, the end of all of this, you're asking for direction. Sometimes, when you sit up here, you think you know what is going on in your city, and sometimes, and very often, you find out it's just that, you think you know, and there are other things going on. But I'm not completely clear right now with the current code we have, how these, better, noncompliant, non-conforming, noncompliant, illegal, if you will, windows, how do those get reported to you? I mean, I know it's a variety of ways, but those that we get emails from occasionally that say, hey, you know, I bought this house, all of a sudden I'm cited, and I've got to go deal with this, help. How, what is the most common way that that nonconforming house, in terms of windows, comes to your attention?
Councilmember Drayman, members of the City Council, I would say there were three that are relatively equal. One, the inspectors themselves notice, they go, wait a minute, those windows changed since the last time I drove up and down the street. One, they see, they notice, especially ones where you went from a double-hunged wood, you know, on a Spanish colonial to a slider, those are fairly obvious. Number two, neighbors report them and say, hey, windows just got changed out, and those may or may not have permits, and frequently, somebody will call something in, we'll check, and lo and behold, they actually had permits for that, and we do that. And then the third one is when they come in to do something else, staff will catch that at the counter, go, wait a minute, you want to do this, but we're showing windows here to do that. And those are probably the three ways that they come to us. They're probably pretty equal.
When did our current set of guidelines for windows go into effect?
The current policy that we started implementing was in 2006, after two discussions with the Design Review Board, in terms of learning from the DRB what could be exempted at the staff level, as opposed to what should be pushed back up to the DRB. That's when we started really focusing a lot more on windows than before.
Okay, but that is, that's related more to the aesthetic, because, because the, if, let's see, my colleague, Mr. Najarian, was picking on Mr. Barnes, so let me pick on him too, just for the fun of it. If he had a property where he himself owned the property and replaced windows without a permit, regardless of the aesthetic, even if they are attractive, expensive, compliant in terms of the aesthetic, he would be swept into this group too, correct? Into this? Yeah?
Yes, without permits.
In other words, we do this survey, and we're looking at the, but would it? In other words, you do a survey of 35,000 homes, single-family homes, are you focusing on the, on just those that meet the threshold of the aesthetic? Or we're surveying 35,000 homes, and then we're going to do a search on 35,000 properties to see whether or not, do you see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. For example, if you, do we notice, or will we identify the properties where the windows are, from an architectural standpoint, are appropriate, but where nonetheless they were done without permits? Will we be able to identify those?
Well, not will you be able to.
But will we focus on?
In order to make that determination.
That would, that would have a lot to do with the direction that the City Council gives us in terms of the level of survey you would like us to do. If you would like us to survey, a visual survey with photographs and create a database, and then identify the ones that are inconsistent architecturally, that would be one layer. But if you wanted us to do a research to back up those and see which ones of these properties have had window changeouts without permits, then that would be a lot more detailed, and we could do that as well, but that would be more staff-intensive.
Well, let's say we gave you that direction, just hypothetically. If this council were to give that direction, say, well, it's not just the aesthetic we're looking at, it's also the compliance with the code. How would, how would your field person, whether it's staff or part-time, differentiate between, in other words, they would, how would they differentiate if the threshold is not aesthetic? Because otherwise, you'd literally be looking at, looking at every property to see, that you're surveying, to see whether or not they pulled permits.
Well, I should admit that it's much, much easier for an individual to recognize the ones that are aesthetically off than those that are aesthetically consistent. So to get to the second layer, it would take a little bit more training and perhaps really a thorough research on the permit files. And then again, even then, there is a chance, I should admit, that we would miss it, because unless we suspect that a building has had a window changeout, although the windows seem correct, and then we go and specifically check out the case file where the records on that particular property, we won't get to that level of understanding. But it's a challenging question, and I don't have a complete answer for you, but there are a couple of other steps we can take to get closer to it, but I cannot tell you that we can get 100% certainty on, have we identified every possible property that has had a window changeout without permit? I can't tell you that.
Why is there no option that, or I suppose there could be, but is there a reason not to have an option that would say something like, let's say you decided to go with option five, and I'm not saying we're going to, but let's say you wanted to, why couldn't you blend that with option five plus continuation of following up on inspectors who noticed something that's being done, neighbors calling? I mean, could that be an option as well, so that the person who calls about their next-door neighbor doesn't have to wait 30 years for the house to be sold? Or is there a reason you wouldn't want to do that?
Mayor Protem Friedman, members of the City Council, I didn't finish my presentation. I actually had one more line to say each of these options are not exclusive. I mean, part of what we've done is tried to give you a list, and it's almost like a cafeteria, we like this part of this one and this part of this one. I would say probably there's some that are better, and there's probably some we didn't think of. Tried to do the best job we could, given your concern about this, when we started this back in July and August, when this issue was, quite honestly, flaming.
Is there any other? Any other, Mr. Weaver?
Back on my favorite component again, to your knowledge, does anybody, Home Depot, or anybody sell windows that are not safe for entry and exit?
Yes.
In this city?
Yes.
Or, some cities. So, they're making ones that don't make safety codes in this state?
Depends where you put them.
Depends on the application.
You guys answered the question.
The application?
Yeah.
Draymond.
Well, for example, for example, suppose you went to Home Depot and found a window that was about this big, and is meant to be an incidental window for a bathroom, or a-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But, but your handyman is going to install it-
In a bedroom.
As the main window for a bedroom, it wouldn't be-
Facing the street, of course.
Well, regardless, it wouldn't be safe for that application, although it might be a perfectly legal window for some other application somewhere else in the house.
Or a window could be improperly installed, which could cause a safety hazard.
Well, it's built with a frame and everything. I mean, you're not going to see tiny windows facing the street, you can tell, that's a safety issue right away, on an inspection.
Yes.
Big ones? I don't see why you would put anything that you couldn't ingress or egress. Well, if it's a plate, glass place, and then you have a window on the side, you'd have to break the window to get out. I'm just trying to explore that, because I'm not sure what we're getting from a citywide inspection.
It's, it's out there as an option.
Yeah, it's just one of the options.
Just one of the options.
Any other questions? The staff has any-
I just have a quick one. Sam? As a chief enforcement officer of the City of Glendale, which of these options or combination do you think is the best?
He doesn't have an answer for that.
Best applicable, is best applicable to our city? If you want to ask, I mean, I really would like your opinion on it.
Councilmember Najarian, members of the City Council, the core component of whatever enforcement program we do in the city, whether it's us or police, but in particular, us with the deal with property, is it's got to be fair and equitable. I need to be able to look at a person that I'm dealing with, that has violated the code, and be able to tell them, as Jim Austin frequently says, and pass the red face test, that the way we're treating them is the same way we've treated everybody else before you, and will treat everybody else after you, who has the same circumstance, and with the same level of understanding, those kind of things. The survey's attractive to me, because it establishes, establishes a point whereby you can say, "All right, this is, this is, this is that level of fairness that allows us to, to make sure that our enforcement program, that we're carrying out on your behalf, is ultimately fair." Do I have a preference? Not particularly on that. I would strongly urge you to consider a point-of-sale program to deal with this moving forward. I have to tell you, the real estate disclosure law has not worked for us. It hasn't dealt with those things, those problems that come up with somebody who buys a piece of property, and they're stuck with it because someone didn't tell them what was going on with the property. Things they knew, windows that were changed out by the previous owner, family rooms that were added on by the previous owner, those things are not being disclosed. And it creates a tremendously negative situation for someone who, someone mentioned, moving from Santa Monica, didn't know anything about Glendale. Their first experience with the City of Glendale is a negative reaction from the City of Glendale, us as an organization that could have been corrected right up front. And that person may have made the choice, as the Realtors will tell you, not to buy that house because of those problems that were inherent there. But it stopped that negative transaction, and a person from maybe losing a potential part of their investment. And we have had that happen, where people have had to invest tens of thousands of dollars to correct something that they didn't know about when they bought the property, that should have been told to them. So, in answer to your question, I'd like you to consider that one. And I think we need to work together on some of the other stuff, on how to deal with the after-the-fact stuff.
Thank you. Is there anything else that staff wants to communicate before we go to the public? Okay, then I'm going to open up the public hearing. One thing I just wanted to clarify-
This is not a public hearing, just public comment.
Okay, I want, sorry, I'm going to, I'm still used to the Design Review Board procedures. Before we go to that, I just wanted to clarify one thing, that I think there was some misunderstanding among some of the public, based on the letters that I saw in the Glendale news press, which is that there's no talk about banning public, banning vinyl windows. What we're trying to do is to set out guidelines as to where they're appropriate, and what type of vinyl windows. And the staff has not recommended that they be banned for any type of structure that I've seen. So, whatever kind of house you want, if you want vinyl, according to our guidelines, you can have vinyl, it just has to be the right vinyl windows. So, I just want to make that really clear, so that people don't go into this with that misunderstanding. Okay, Ruth Brown, and everyone's going to have three minutes. Ruth Brown, followed by Robert Long.
Mayor Pro Tem Friedman, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. If I may, I would like to tell you a story about myself. In 2008, I decided that two of the windows on the west side of my home needed to be replaced. I went to the planning depart, the permitting department, and asked for a permit. I, I should rephrase that. I did not go personally, I asked the Pella people to do that job for me. The person who was issuing, issuing the permit for the two windows decided, on what basis I don't know, that the rest of the windows in my house must be defective. And so, he contacted Neighborhood Services, and asked them to send an inspector. He had never seen my house. But on the basis of his request, an inspector came out, and I would say, rather negatively, accused me of putting in windows without a permit. The windows in the front of my house are vinyl clad, they do have window sills, they do have frames around them that are, that are wood. But that apparently is a violation. I explained that I, in fact, had not installed those windows, that I had lived in the house for 10 years, and that I didn't know when the windows had been installed. However, I received a notice of violation, saying that all the windows in my house were out of code. I have worked for a year contacting Mr. Engel, contacting Mr. Platt, writing letters, making phone calls, trying to resolve this. What they told me I had to do was to put in all new windows in the front of my house. Now, the two windows that I did have a permit for cost me $5,000. They were Pella windows, but I like Pella windows, because they are good value. I have five windows across the front of my house. Based on what it cost me to put in the two windows on the side, I am looking at something like $15,000.
I'll give you another minute.
Thank you. I think I am a poster child for this whole discussion today. I would like to ask you, please, do not accept the provision that says there should be only grids that go on the outside, as well as the inside of the window. Because that is one of the things that makes windows much more expensive. I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Robert Long, followed by Rick Barnes.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Robert Long, and wife and I live at 1971 Eden Avenue, 91206, just above Glen Oaks Boulevard, immediately east of the two freeway. We looked around for a home, we used to live at 3318 Alabama Street, that's up above, in the upper Glendale, I call it, it's up above the Boulevard, and a house there. And that's, that is another issue, and I've contacted Neighborhood Services about various problems in that area, be that as it may. We bought this house out of foreclosure. It occurred this way, we were working with a Realtor, and we bought it eventually from Downey Savings and Loan Association, and it was, it was sold in foreclosure. And we bid on it, and were approved. So, we took title in late February of, it was 2009, and knew nothing about whether or not windows were good, bad, or whatever. Naturally, we looked at the building, and the wife and I liked the building very much, especially the interior, but the exterior does need a little work. The building was put up in 1932, it's a hillside building, it's a very good building, as far as I'm concerned, good for our purposes. But the notice of violation came about as a result of leaving trash cans out on the street by Downey Savings and Loan. They were, held the title at that time, we had no right to possession, ownership, or anything else at that time. So, obviously, one of our neighbors reported it, which is an interesting issue, too. But in any event, reported it, and out comes the inspector from Neighborhood Services, and sends us a notice of violation. So, we've been discussing it ever since, about what's going to go on. I personally think, as a matter of my taste, that the windows that are installed are, they look very good. They have interior mountains, and we have a sheet of glass, makes it easier to clean, we have double pane, which is nice for the freeway noise, and it's also good for temperature control. So, as far as I'm concerned, they look good. However, the building, being of that age, has, has inset window frames, and it also has sills. So, I've thought, and I've thought about this after the complaints, that it would be probably acceptable just to inset the window frame itself, and put in the sill, maybe a surround, to make it consistent with the rest of the windows in the building. Naturally, what I'm trying to do, I'm not entirely retarded, but almost, what I'm trying to do is to make a compromise, so I don't have to spend a lot of money on it, and so it looks appropriate. Now, another thing that I thought, well, maybe we can just paste, if people object to the street appearance, because the mountains aren't appropriate, and they're not, they're interior instead of exterior, we'll just paste some on the outside, something that looks good-
I'm sorry, your time is up, if you can just wrap it up.
Time is up?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't want to take any more time, but we have a problem, because we're, we're the innocents, we're not quite the poster child, but we would like to have some consideration on what I've said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The famous Rick Barnes, followed by John Lucaccio.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council staff. I'm the infamous, I guess, Rick Barnes, or Jose Jimenez. There's so much that was said today, that I had a different idea of what to, what to start with, but you guys, I think, number one, is I did a survey. I went, I, because of something I heard Mr. Draymond say, I went to his area, and I was shocked at how many houses have windows that are replaced windows, replacement windows. And I didn't look whether they're vinyl, whatever, most of them looked vinyl to me. And I pulled permits on them, and eight out of 10 of them were not permitted. I went to another part of Glendale, and I did the same thing, and seven out of 10 had no permits. So, it's a very high number. But this young couple here, that just came up and talked about their homes, that's the thing that I see when I talk to, when I'm doing a listing, or talking to people about their property, they have replaced them because they were trying to do something better about their community. They weren't trying to hurt us. And, and I think back to my 1967 Cougar, that when I go and get repairs to it, I don't come down here and ask, and Sam is a good guy, I have taken many, many clients to Neighborhood Services, and we work through problems. But I don't come and ask you guys to replace my alternator. I don't come down and ask you to replace my, at my house, I thought, "Well, you don't need to get a permit to replace a sprinkler system, or the sprinkler heads." Yes, you do. How many people get plumbing? They have to. But in our normal, everyday life, this, these people bought the house, they liked what they saw. It wasn't about the permit of the window. I think what we've come to is, we have historic preservationists that want everything that's mine belongs to them. We have people that say, "Oh, wait, Ara has a home, but he's now changed his windows, and I don't like him." Wait a minute, I'm paying the money, I'm paying the taxes, I'm paying the maintenance. It's kind of like trees, I've got to go and get some trees trimmed, and for three years, I've put it off, three years, because of the permit process, and the fact that my wife and I fight over how she wants them, and how I want them. Okay? The same thing with the window. I mean, not only do we have to fight with our own family about what kind of windows we're putting in, but now we've got to come down and please, staff, with what kind of window. And I have one where, every time I take a listing, we are so easy in this city, we go and we make a phone call to 548-3200, and ask if the permits be sent out. Guess what? They're emailed directly to us. I've taken those permits, I go to the property owner and say, "Look at what you don't have permitted." And one in particular bought it from an attorney, and they said, "Everything was done by this attorney," and we know it, it was really a good guy. Not one improvement on that property was done to permit, not one within that thing. And they had 24 pages of permits. So, when I'm looking at this, and you can blame it on us, we have a little disclosure thing that says, "Hey, you got to go find out." I try and do it at the first part, and I just want to say that with the ending here, is that we're making a mistake when we're taking away the property rights of the individual property owner, in trying to say, "We want this type of window in our city." No, it's their property, they paid for it, and their budget may only fit, they can't buy a Pella, they may fit what's, what's Home Depot. When we're taking that away from them, we're going to start decreasing the improvements to the properties in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lucaccio, followed by Aramis Marco Rabinens. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced anybody's name today.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff. My name is John Lucaccio, I'm an architect, I'm also the president of the Glendale Historical Society. I'd like to commend Mr. Hagani and his staff on doing a very good job putting together the draft guidelines for window replacement. I think they're very comprehensive, they're very easy to understand, and easy to use, and they make a lot of the issues involving window replacement very clear. There is, however, one glaring omission from the guidelines, there is absolutely no information on alternatives to window replacement. There's been a lot of talk about economics, about what's most reasonable, or most reasonable cost for homeowners to bear. The cheapest option is usually repair of existing windows. Wood windows will last indefinitely if they're properly maintained. They can be repaired, they can be retrofitted, they can be weather-stripped, to perform pretty much as well as new windows, and will last far longer than vinyl windows, which typically last at most 20 years. The return on investment of repairing existing windows is significantly greater than the return on investment for replacement. It costs about $12,000 to replace a house's windows, on average. The average time it takes to recoup that investment, at an estimated savings of $50 a month, is at least 20 years. That's the lifespan of the windows. It's not a good investment. Homeowners need to be provided with this information, with alternatives to replacement. They need to know that there are alternatives. And if the guidelines don't include that, then we're missing the boat. So, I would ask you to direct staff to include information on alternatives to window replacement in the guidelines. And I would also encourage you to adopt option five, the point-of-sale inspections, as a most reasonable way of informing prospective homebuyers of any problems with their home, in combination with ongoing observance and enforcement of code issues as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Aramis Marco Rabinens, followed by Armin Abadian.
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Aramis Marco Rabinens. And I make my story short, in 2007, I decided to change my windows, and I sent my sister, who's my partner in the house. So, somebody in Orly gave her this suggestion, that you don't have to get a permit and change the windows. So, I went, I changed it to the vinyl, and sliding type. And last June, I received a letter from the Neighborhood Service, that I violate the code, so I have to get a permit. So, I went through those paperworks, and I got a permit, and they told me that I have to change only three fronts. The sides are okay, they approved the sides and the back. Three fronts that I have to change to single hung, or double hung, and fiberglass, with the ceiling, you know, with the wood underneath, keep the city- ceiling, you know, with the wood underneath, keep the city architect. So right now, my window is on order. I ordered those three windows through my contractor. And so my question is, should I, when I got the permit, so I have a permit, the permit has been issued, you know. My question is, should I wait till your decision or just go ahead and change my windows? That's my question is.
Thank you. There's a response, it'll be at the end of.
Excuse me there?
If there's a response, it will be at the end of the public.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Armin Avadian, followed by Aram Kazakian.
Good afternoon, Ms. Friedman, members of City Council and staff. I am Armin Avadian. I am the 2008 President of the Glendale Association of Realtors, 2009 Chairman of the LGLR Committee of the Glendale Association, and currently a member of that committee. I represent the Glendale Association. In past years, we've always kept open channels with City Council and City staff regarding issues which affect thousands and thousands of residents in the city of Glendale. So we are once somewhat disappointed in the lack of staff outreach to this issue prior to taking this issue for discussion before the City Council. We found out about it, I believe, on Friday, that this was going to even happen. And if it wasn't for Rick Barnes, who was on our committee, we really wouldn't have even known what the issues were. I think it would be nice for City Staff to come to us, talk to us, which we're always open to discussions, because everything we do, it relates to people who live in this city. We sell homes, you know, and it's residents. And this is something which affects everybody that we work with. Beyond that, there are six options. We really did not like any of the options 100%. If forced to vote yea on any of them, possibly Option 2 and Option 3, we would kind of be inclined to vote for, which Option 2 is the window survey establishing amnesty for windows installed prior to the survey date. And Option 3, which is that, you know, any properties which, you know, if a homeowner buys a property and they did not get prop disclosures that it was without permits, they would get some kind of an amnesty on that also. Again, we'd love to talk and discuss in detail before City Council makes any concrete decisions on this. We feel Option 1 is pretty radical. It creates a huge bureaucracy. It draws on a lot of City Staff hours. It almost needs the creation of a new department for enforcement and looking into it. And it, you know, these days when we're trying to cut back on our expenses, I think it's huge on the expense front. Option 4 and 5, they open a huge can of worms and potential huge problems with the time, at the time of the sale of the property, you know, the notice of noncompliance filed with a lien on the property. This really is, it really is not a good idea at all. Option 5, the point-of-sale clause, Mr. Sam Ingles, I respect him very much. He seems very enthused about it, but I think it is horrible. It is probably the most horrible of all the options here. It will take about 30 to 40 years for every home in Glendale, statistically proven, about 40 years for every home in Glendale to sell. So it'll take 40 years to have this go into compliance, every window in Glendale to be compliant. Is that what we're wishing for? I think that's a little too slow. I'm sure there's better ways.
Your time is up, if you can just finish.
Sure. Finishing up. Option number 6 is, I think Option number 6 would put, it would just pit homeowner against homeowner, city against homeowners, et cetera, et cetera. It's a horrible option. I would love for City Staff and City Council to come meet with us. Let's talk. Let's put the needs and the best interests of the city of Glendale residents in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Aram Kazakian, followed by Leon Caraj.
My name is Aram Kazakian. I came over here to bring some samples, what windows look like, so a little bit more interesting fact. I'm not here to solicit sale or endorse any manufacturers. I took all the names off, so you will not know what window this is. Now, if you would have asked me this question two years ago, by the way, Ara said vinyl windows are out. I had a lot of problems in the future. I even told Rick about that. Vinyl windows in the older style, the ones you buy from M&amp;M manufacturer, M&amp;M, I made a name up, those windows are junk, garbage. They start sagging, warping, and the panes don't close correctly, the color outside, this colors, really, it doesn't do justice to our city. Now, you'll find a lot of different windows, you'll find, this is just dirt, by the way, or sitting in the truck. This is a nice window. This is the frame you see. This is buried, it's an A-lon frame, which you don't see it. It's not very, it's not very big, but your pane over here is big. You're going to see that on a vinyl versus an aluminum window. Now, when you come into a Z-bar window, please stay away from it. Z-bar windows are not appropriate. There are some manufacturers, a lot of manufacturers make different color windows, by the way. And this is called a desert tan. It's not an almond color. Almond color windows are more yellowish, and the white windows, the cheaper brands, they discolor in time, they turn yellow, and it's not very good. All the joints, the corners start opening up on the cheaper brands, they crack, the glue doesn't hold very well. These windows, you can even wax them, clean them, and they will stay for many years. This is a very nice color. In Rancho Sandro, our architectural committee, which is very, very involved in a lot of different things, we, they have voted on just to only use off-white colors, which they don't want, stick with the white, because the white, you see some of the pictures, they look very too gaudy, and it doesn't adjust it to our Spanish-style homes. It takes it out of the content. So we have voted just to go to a different color, which is, this is one of the color we accept to put in. They can bring us different colors, but this is a very nice color. The finish stays real nice. The windows doesn't warp, doesn't twist. It's a very strong window frame. This is one of the options. So I have changed my mind, by the way, so that's why I'm bringing you, to show you that you can go to vinyl windows. The grids, this is a non-grid one, they also make them with grids, but they make them inside, they don't make them outside. You can put them on outside, too. Also, what Mr. Sam Ingles said, he's absolutely right. If you have two windows next to each other, or they're posted in between, the windows are three feet and three feet, that's not a legal window. If you change it to a three-foot slider, it will not work.
Okay, thank you.
Building code, you know, because it has an IGRAS, does not function.
Okay, thank you.
So you need to go to a four-foot or a six-foot wide.
Leon Caraj, followed by Lila Ramirez.
Good afternoon, dear Council members, staff. I'm Dr. Leon Caraj. I am practicing dental surgery in the city of Bakersfield, but my family's here, and we purchased a house residence in 2009. And just like Mr. Ingles said, instead of enjoying the residence, we've been, basically, I've been spending, this is probably the second lost time, work time, in my week that I'm trying to get a bottom to this story. Now, to be brief, basically, we bought a house that had been rebuilt, reconstructed, or remodeled. I don't know terms, not an expert in it. And this was done in 2003. Apparently, the people that did this rebuilding obtained every permit except the window permit. And what do you know, the windows are Z-bar, vinyl windows, which are prohibited for some reason. Again, I'm not an expert, and I don't know. However, none of this information was disclosed to me during the purchase. Now, I know when you buy a car that's worth $3,000, if it has any kind of citation violation, they just wouldn't register your car. Now, if we can do that for a $3,000 item, don't you think we should do that for a $300,000 item? And then, this change was done in 2003. Now, I heard the guides and regulations were adopted in 2003. Now, if those changes were done before that, are they still subject to enforcement to the law? Am I subject to enforcement to the law? What have I done wrong here? I mean, I've done everything that can be reasonably asked from a citizen that's trying to buy a residence. I've gone even furthermore. I've called the city of Glendale, City Hall, and I asked, because I was buying, I knew I was buying a foreclosure, foreclosed house. So I suspected there could be things that wasn't disclosed to me. The bank, they, you know, they just wouldn't care. They have good attorneys. But I called the number, I called the 411 number, can I get the phone number for the City Hall? So they gave me an 818-547 number. I called that number, they said, and I said, I'm trying to buy a house. I want to know if there's anything that I should be concerned legally with this house before I bought it, because I'm buying it as a foreclosure. So they gave me a number, 818-548-4836 number. They said, this is where, you know, you can obtain information. Checked out, everything is perfect. There's no violations, nothing recorded against the house. So after I buy the house, I get a notice of violation. Should I cut it off? Basically, when you adopt the guidelines, please consider that there are people like us. I mean, I haven't done anything wrong. Everything that was asked of me.
You got the point, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice afternoon.
Lila Ramirez is my final card. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please turn a card in within the next three minutes.
Good evening, Councilmember, Mayor Protem, members of the Council, staff. My name's Lila Ramirez, and I'm a resident of the city and a president of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association. Wanted to thank staff for an excellent report. Must have taken you weeks to put it together. There's a lot of information here. And we, as an association, had not a chance to really go over it, but it's consistent with everything that we have supported in the past. I find that it's consistent with the Historic District Guidelines, which we are in full support of. And it's important to us because we're in the process of putting together Rossmoyn Historic District. Our Historic District Chair, in fact, is here, as was our past District Chair. We've been working on this for about 15 years. It's important to us as a district, and it's phase one, because we're going to do it in phases, that the homes that we have in the Rossmoyn area do not become uncontributors while waiting to do this. Windows are very, very significant to the homes in our area. And I think often homeowners don't realize what they have and replace windows when, in fact, they could maintain and retain what they have. So I would just like to stress that we think that they are consistent with Historic District Guidelines. They're consistent to what we support in the guidelines, and that's the facade, the front facade, and what's visible from the side. Generally, we agree with Historic Society's position, Glendale Historic Society's position, with John's position. And I just want to say that I personally support Option 5, and I wanted to add that I just kind of maybe think that you might consider eliminating that pylon inspections, because that, I think, is what creates a bulk of the numerous problems that we have with violation of windows. And I think that Number 5 could take care of it very easily. Also, I wanted to note that there's great concern about the meeting, this special meeting this afternoon. And if you had noted it, and I noticed that it's not on the agenda as a study session, I think it would be clearer, because it's a very good opportunity for us to address you and maybe give you some support or assistance, as did John with the alternatives. Anyway, that's just kind of pointing, I wanted to raise that if it's a study session, if you've listed us a study session, we'd have less of a concern about. Did I misstate something?
No.
Legally, under the Brown Act, it's a regular meeting or a special meeting. Study session is really a special meeting.
Yeah, but see, okay, just so we know that, so that we don't think that we're being excluded.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's my final card. With that, I will take comments from the Council. Mr. Drayman.
Well, I just, I have only a few comments or questions or what have you, but I did want to address this very last point that Lila Ramirez just mentioned. No matter how it's noticed to the public, if it, we've held innumerable, innumerable study sessions, and they're promoted as study sessions. And I think the point is not what the legal, you know, the more narrow legal definition is, if, we really need to make it clear that we want the public's input. And when I say the public, I don't just mean residents. I also mean all stakeholders that have an interest in this. So it wouldn't be a bad thing if this had, I mean, it would have eliminated some confusion, let's put it that way, as to what this was all about. And some of that would be the confusion that I think is out there that you mentioned yourself in your opening comments before the public session, Madam Protem, Mayor Protem. I have a question for Mr. Barnes, if the famous or infamous, whichever he prefers to call himself. Mr. Barnes, what part of the city, in what part of the city do you live?
Right now, I'm the Royal, the Royal track.
Zip code wise? What brought you over to my neighborhood to check windows, just out of curiosity? Since you all live there.
Well, I own property, and I sell property up in that neighborhood. And I actually took a listing on a property that had illegal windows.
Yeah.
And they were not windows that could be conformed to with the city.
Any in 91207?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have several in 91207.
But you didn't mention those.
Well, I did say that I went to some other district, and that was the seven out of 10.
Yeah. Anyway, I just, I find it, I find it very interesting, your approach and technique. I just wanted to make that comment to you.
Time eliminates.
That was the only question I had.
Okay.
Actually, in my neighborhood, Madam Mayor Protem, in my neighborhood and on my series of blocks, there are virtually no, zero, single-family homes. There are virtually all multifamily dwellings of one sort or another, either multifamily condominiums, multifamily co-ops verging on condominiums, or duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and that sort of thing, just for the record. You have to go a ways to come to a single-family home now. Anyway, since you raised it, Mr. Barnes, and singled me out, I thought I would, I would just clarify that you made a little journey up to my neighborhood to do that. But I thank you for doing that.
It's beautiful up here.
Actually, one of the.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
One of the, one of the comments I was going to make, and I had made a note about it, is to go and take a walk in my, that I had gone and taken a walk in my neighborhood. And it's interesting, as it bears on this, because as most of you know, I'm currently not living in my normal neighborhood because of a water intrusion incident. So I'm currently, Mr. Barnes, living in your neighborhood, 91207. And over the Thanksgiving holidays, I took a little walk in our neighborhood, and specifically with an eye toward this window issue, and enforcement with code and compliance and aesthetic and all of that, and discovered, my goodness, just on one and a half blocks either direction from where I'm living currently, there are many, many homes with windows that are out of compliance for one reason or another, that are obviously so, you know, grids on the inside and just a flat sheet of glass that reflects in a way that is more reminiscent of Plexiglas than it is glass, and a variety of other very obvious issues. Anyway, I also had a question of staff that seems unrelated, but to me, it is related. And maybe Mr. City Manager and City Attorney can weigh in, too. When I was first elected to this council, one of the first things that I heard raised happened to be by my neighbor next to me to the left here, Mr. Weaver, related to a hotline for weekend hot construction. a hotline for weekend hot construction, so to speak, perhaps unpermitted construction. And that was, we talked about bringing that back. It never happened. And I've been now here, I've been here now almost three years. That never came back. I don't think that is being promoted. I don't know that we have that, but I think that would, that would clearly help, not only in this issue, but in a variety of other issues where this council claims that it is very pro-compliance with the code, but we don't have that tool. And, or if we do have that tool, I don't think I'm the only one that's unaware of it, so.
We, we do not have a specific program. We do, however, though, have inspectors that can be available on weekends that are, that are on routine inspection, so...
But if the public doesn't have a place to call on the weekend, how would we get to those inspectors?
First off, this, this, this hasn't been advanced as quickly because of the budget issues.
Yeah.
Two is, I've always had a concern, frankly, about if you make widely known that somebody will be available to come out to investigate something, we will get a call in all likelihood with every saw or hammer blow in some neighborhoods. If something is serious enough, people have the advantage of going to the police department, and there are inspectors, neighborhood services, who will make a call. But we don't have a specific program where somebody is available to take every call on a weekend, and we don't have a hotline for people to phone in. I suspect we would get lots of calls...
Well, I suspect you would too. We do have an ordinance that says you can't be doing construction on, let's say, Sunday during certain hours with power tools, correct?
Well, you can't, you cannot do commercial construction, commercial contracts.
I'm putting a new roof on. Can I do that with power tools blaring away on Sunday?
Not on Sunday unless it's an emergency.
There you go. So, who would I call?
It's a noise issue, you'd call the police department.
Who would you call? You observe a truck pulling up, and the old windows are being yanked out, and brand X windows are being hammered up, on, you know, on a Sunday afternoon. Who would you call? You don't. That's the bottom line. We don't right now. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. City Manager, but even if it's, even if it's a number where you can register the complaint and the call at a certain time, and it's investigated at a later date. But, I was interested that that, that issue of Mr. Weaver's never came forward. And, you know, I know it was his issue to raise, he hasn't brought it up recently, but I'm curious about that, and I do think it relates to the enforcement aspect of, of this. I'm going to go through some other comments that I have, and, and they are truly that, comments. I don't know where I am with this right now. I can tell you part of the way, where I am with this, and it may surprise some because, generally speaking, I am, well, not generally speaking, I am specifically a proponent of historic districts, preservation in our city, and so on. I'm trying to square that with other issues that are not necessarily related to those, those aspects. Some of them are things related to cost, things related to investment of staff time, things related to trying to balance out aesthetic versus cost, aesthetic versus safety, and aesthetic versus compliance to code. Because those are all very important factors as we look at this. We're talking about doing a survey. Right now, I don't see it. And it's, and part of that is the cost, which is undefined at the moment. A part of that is the amount of staff necessary, part of that is undefined at the moment. Have to come back to that. But also, I'm looking at the daunting size of the mountain we're talking about. And maybe it isn't 35,000 homes, maybe it's 30,000, or maybe it's 38,000, or 33,000. That's, to survey tens of thousands of homes in this city, and it not really be a complete survey in the sense that we're only dealing with the aesthetic. Mr. Agani, nobody respects what you do here more than I. Well, we will all argue that point, I guess. I think we all respect what you do and your level of professionalism, but with all due respect, I don't think it would be a minute number that would fall through the cracks, so to speak. The threshold would be the aesthetic. Otherwise, you would have to look at every single home to see, A, does it look from the street like there has been window work done of some sort? And then, B, we have to then look and see whether any permits have been pulled for that work. Otherwise, we're just looking at the aesthetic and saying, "Is that, is that the threshold?" So, I'm not necessarily prepared to vote no to a survey, but I'm, I'm leaning in that direction because I, and that's, that's the other reason why I prefer to think of this as a study session. I want to hear more input on that, is what I'm trying to say. The feasibility of that. And also, I would want to know the cost and the amount of staff time. The comment was made that the staff and the city are using our common sense, but when you, on this, which I agree, and I've seen the process, but I also get a lot of emails from folks that are trapped in strange situations that unfold in the way some of the speakers, and I don't, I'm not sure that they would necessarily agree that we're using our common sense. This is, this points to something that we, as policymakers, really have to address in terms of making it very clear and definitive, that also provides some protection, or at minimum, a fairly easy and accessible process for people who are cited. And, and so it doesn't become a protracted battle. I mentioned the walk in my neighborhood. The last thing I want to say for the moment is, what I am committed to is, I want to see appropriate and compliant and aesthetically correct, when I say correct, I mean with regard to our guidelines that exist, windows. But, and I also want safe windows in our city, but I want to be very careful about criminalizing half the city in the process, and the effect and cost to this city on a variety of levels if we go down that road. So, my mind is open on all of this, and I do want to hear more input from my colleagues and staff, and in future time, the public. But I'm very inclined, at this point, to look at a timeframe to gain compliance moving forward. And, my biggest question is what we do with those who are, you know, have purchased a home and have windows that are out of compliance, or, and including those who intentionally go over, around, or under existing ordinances, or rather, codes or guidelines that fall into that category that are, that have non-compliant windows. My concern right now is the equitable, is, was the word Mr. Platt used, equitable mechanism to address what has already happened versus going forward. Going forward is a much clearer issue for me. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I wish we weren't sitting here discussing this at all. I started the wheel rolling on fences by asking that to be put on because we were starting to say, "Everybody's got to take their fences down." And I said, "No, there's areas of Glendale where fences are appropriate, hillsides, et cetera, and extereas of city, and different conditions, for fences or no fences." And, I happen to believe in private property rights. It seems government continues to infringe more and more and more into private property rights, regulating literally everything. I've sat here 13 years, and I've seen it get, in my, in my view, worse and worse. I don't know how other cities are, but I think we try to permit and regulate everything too much. I know when I arrived here in 1939, my father had built a house in 1938. Has all the wood windows, Spanish style. I still remember those wood windows as long as I lived there. Now, I get information from people commenting on windows, and the words used are "the old homes," "the historical homes." That's one thing. That's different from the houses that were built after World War II and after Korea. Things changed. New materials came on the market. There's building booms, a lot of cheap construction done, nothing like was built back in the 30s or the 40s. Changing times. Now, it boils down, no offense, but people that have historical ties or care about it, nothing wrong with that. But these kind of people, in my view, try to regulate the entire city in their, in their view, what they think. I don't agree with that. I don't drive down the streets looking at all the homes to see what kind of windows they have. I think that is a private matter for that homeowner to have. "Oh, it doesn't make these standards, it's the wrong style for the style." And they, they put it in. When I built my house in 71, it's Spanish. Vinyl, wood-cased windows. 37 years ago, and they're still operating, never painted, never faded. Pella sliding doors, vinyl encased, wood vinyl encased, still operating. So, well, am I not in compliance because I have a vinyl window with a Spanish house? Am I going to get a notice? I got to take out the windows I put in in 1971? That's an intrusion, my private right. Every time we talk about regulating things like this, I don't agree. Obviously, something is going to happen with all these types. I really don't care. They say, "Let the homeowners deal with it." Now, safety, and you saw me hit on that. When you're talking safety, that's something else. It's not code compliant. Okay, you, you have to notify the owner. Once the owner knows on the code compliance, not on, "I don't like that window," and next person says, "Well, I do." Or, two neighbors get into it, and he parked in front of my house and it's front of his house, and he says, "I'm turning him in for that. I hate that." One neighbor is pitted against another. I don't care to go down that street. You want a survey, which I think is too costly? Everybody going by every house, click, click, taking picture, and that's starting, "Is that legitimate? Does he have a permit? Did he change it out?" Getting at all that. Why do, why do anybody care? Why does anybody care if it's, if it is code compliant? So, finding that out and fixing those types. And if you do find it, okay, tell the homeowner, "You have a window that is not code compliant." And explain to the homeowner why it's not code compliant, why there's a safety issue here. Do you realize, Mr. Homeowner, that your window is so small, if an earthquake comes or fire, you're not going to be able to get out of that house? Oh gee, I didn't think about that. Well, tell them, "Well, you better get down, get one, because this is wrong, we're not going to permit it." But beyond that, telling them that they have a house that is not compliant, like this lady, "You're going to have to take all the windows out." That is absolutely ridiculous. I don't agree with it, and I never will. If you want to, let's see, point of sale, if you're going to go down? Yeah, I, I think it's like the gentleman said on buying a car. You buy a house, I don't know how you do it without causing a lot of friction, but that person buying has a right to know if there's anything in there that is not permitted. I'd want to know. Now, beyond that, you now force the issue? You now say, "You got to get it all compliant?" Or do you let him live in it, not code compliant, let him guessing if he's got a problem on the horizon? Or do you tell him, "Okay, you want to live that way, fine, but when you sell, you have to tell the new homeowner." And how do you do that? Negotiate the price, the buyer-seller, split the cost or whatever of getting it in compliance at the time of sale. Anything else doesn't seem fair to me, not to the seller, not to the buyer. Now, how we get to that point, I don't know. But I sure as heck wish I was not sitting here today discussing windows in people's private homes. So, I need to know a lot more too before I vote on different issues. Thank you.
We have had a rather lengthy discussion, and I think the problem is that we've all seen a window or two on a house that is just god-awful looking, that you look at it and it says, "Oh, my God, that window shouldn't be there. What a mess it makes of the house, perhaps extending it further, what a mess it makes of this block, and what a mess it makes of the neighborhood." But, from what I've seen in my travels, I won't say whose neighborhoods.
Wise.
I don't want to go that way, but for the majority of the windows that we're talking about, with the interior muntens and the vinyl cladding, although they might not add to the house, although they might detract slightly from the house's appearance and value, they're not critical enough of a damage measure to the community, to the homes, for us to take many of these steps. I think we should only be looking at the, the most offensive and obnoxious examples, and that's what we should focus on. There's really, you know, looking at that, that picture, I know Mr. Platt gave a disclaimer that it wasn't a very good example, but, you know, looking at that example that was supposedly a bad window installation, I mean, it's really hard to tell. I, I thought that was, I thought he had the windows flipped, saying that, you know, the one on the left was the bad one, the aluminum clad, and the one on the right, I mean, in all honesty, not to be, not to be a glib about it. And, you know, I am by no means an architectural expert or a design expert, but I know what's acceptable to me. I, you know, very few things, you know, make me nauseous when I look at design and windows and all that. But, I think we need to respect the homeowner's rights to change windows in their home as they see fit, according to their budget. If there's any devaluation or damage caused to their home, well, they're the ones that are going to bear that out in the long run. Their home is going to be worth less than the person who installs the perfect replacement pella windows with the beautiful panes and thresholds and all that. It's really a decision of the homeowner, and that's what we all do. When we decide to buy a refrigerator, or when we decide to redo our driveway, which doesn't need a permit, when we decide to paint our house a certain color or repaint it. And, you know, as long as we're on windows, let's talk about paint color too. There are some god-awful examples of homes, which I think this detract from neighborhoods much more than the, the off-sized window or the glaringly bright white texture of the vinyl. I think we need to, I think we need to back off. We, we need to, I think we need to get the realtors involved. Mr. Vedyan had a very good point. I think clearly the realtor's position is to maintain home values in Glendale. They've always been on the side of preserving neighborhoods, increasing and protecting property values, and I certainly would love to hear their input on this. It is a difficult situation. How do you, you know, back to my first comment, how do you identify the most offensive examples of windows? You know, and maybe this is what we're trying to do, but the thresholds are different for some. For those who are truly appreciative of maintaining original character, they probably have a very low threshold for accepting deviation. For those like myself, who, you know, only object at the most terrible examples, I'm at, I'm at the other end of the scale. I think enforcement, Mr. Drayman's right, there are so many homes out here that have these windows that could be cited. We will be overrun as a city if just one-tenth of them come in to speak and to voice their objections. So, we have to be careful about what we do. We're going to declare a certain, a certain timeline or a time period, a drop-dead date to, you know, give amnesty or not amnesty. It's very critical how we deal with those windows that are already installed. The point-of-sale inspection, option five, I really, I mean, with all respect to the, to Sam Engels' office, I mean, you do such a good job. You go to any other home, you're going to find more than the windows bad. You're going to find not just a, a... You're going to find not just a apartment, a garage being used as an apartment, but there are a zillion things that can be found. I don't want to get to that level of intrusion, where we have inspectors on the sale of a house coming in, inspecting, city inspectors, inspecting from A to Z. I think that's going to be a huge can of worms in itself. I'm a little concerned about going by and taking a picture of everyone's house and keeping it in a database. That seems a little bit too Big Brother-ish for me. There must be another way to deal with this, to determine what work has been done after a certain date, and what work was pre-existing. So I'm not ready to take any action on this. My direction to staff may not be as clear as some of the other things that I've opined on in the past, but I think we need to go slow, we need to use a lighter hand rather than a heavier hand. We need to give every benefit of the doubt to those folks that have pre-existing windows, that bought them pre-existing, and that maybe changed them out without knowledge of the current codes. We need to be a little more lax in the enforcement and the issuance of permits. I'd like to avoid design review whenever possible. That's just a layer of city government that just strikes fear in the heart of many people because of the timing involved, not so much the staff or the commissioners, but it's just an extra level of weight and apprehension and so forth. So probably the best thought I have is, let's discuss it with the Realtors and see what sort of workable opinions they could give us, and then, Mr. Weaver's not here, but maybe bring it back to us within a streamlined form, but as I said, it's like the walls. I mean, it's just, I don't see it as a win for any of us. And that's my opinion.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, there was one other point that I didn't raise, and I would like to, because one is, there was a slide, and I think it was the one of the Z-Bar, Mr. Platt, and I asked you about what that was next to the window that was punched through the stucco, and I think looks to me like it was an air conditioner or a wall air conditioner that was punched through. There is a certain irony in this to me, and you're nodding, and I think you know where I'm headed. That was probably done to code and with a permit. Maybe it was, maybe it wasn't, but we allow that? Could I come in and get a permit to punch through the stucco and put in a wall air conditioner?
Again, we would have to take a look at it in terms of the impact on the design. And the reason I nodded to the irony was that that's another aspect that was showing in the picture that could be subject to the same scrutiny.
Right, and this is what I'm coming to. So you're doing a survey, and you've got this window that you're looking at, and this is just a small example, you're looking at the window, and yep, it's compliant, or no, it's not, or it's the right replacement, or no, it's not, but right next to it, we've punched through the stucco with a window banger air conditioner that's stuck through the wall. We're not here talking about that and the aesthetic aspects of that, the compliant nature of that with the characteristics of the neighborhood and so on, and it's right next to a window that does fall, it is swept into the purview of this study session. It's an interesting irony about that. Lastly, this option five about the point-of-sale, I didn't mean to give the impression that I'm not willing to look at that, I am. At this point, I think where I differ slightly from our colleagues that have spoken to this point, you haven't had the opportunity, but is that, for example, Mr. Avadian said there are other methods perhaps, or other kinds of benchmarks or what have you. I'd be curious to know what those are, and I would support some kind of public outreach with not just the Association of Realtors, but all the stakeholders involved. If there is another option that works in a similar way, I'd like to know what it is, because I assumed if there were a workable option, that it would be on here as a number six or seven or eight. So, anyway, I just want to, again, say, I need more input. I don't have the input necessary to cast a vote today or to give even specific direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get too deep into the situation at hand, I did want to comment on something that our city manager had mentioned, which was, and I'm sorry if I'm miscategorizing this, but to say that if we had a weekend inspector or a hotline, it would be a problem because we'd have a lot of calls. In my mind, you have the weekend inspector or hotline because you would have a lot of calls. The reason you'd have a lot of calls is because we have a lot of illegal building that goes on on the weekends. So I think that's essential, and I'm sorry it hasn't come back to us yet. I think we end up with a lot of these problems because we're not able to stop them at the time they're occurring. If more illegal buildings were stopped while it was occurring, for one thing, it might prevent homeowners from having a contractor put something in without permit, whether a homeowner doesn't know it. It would certainly stop this from ending up going down the process and becoming this kind of an issue in front of council, or planning, or legal, or anywhere else. So I think that that is what we need to nip a lot of these issues in the bud, and we should be much more proactive and more concerned if we have homeowners who are saying to us, we tried to call you over the weekend, but no one answered the phone, or I didn't know how to get to someone. I'm a city council member, I've tried calling and had no idea who to call. The police are not the people who are going to go and look into someone's building permit, and sometimes the work is cleaned up by Monday morning, and the inspector doesn't have any reason to go into a house or can't get into a house, and doesn't know that the homeowner spent the weekend digging a room under the garage, or whatever they did. So I think at the very least, I want to put a very big pitch in for that and for it coming back soon. Something that one of the representatives from the Realtors said struck me, which was that the people that have put these windows in are good citizens, and they were trying to upgrade their home. And I absolutely agree that that's usually the case. This isn't a case of usually of people who are trying to do the wrong thing, and also the people who have come to speak in favor of the guidelines, they're also trying to do the right thing for their community and for their property. So we're in one of these situations where kind of everyone in the room is trying to do the right thing, and in some ways, everyone has the same goal, which is to have a community where people can have some freedom and do what they want, but also where property values are maintained. So I just wanted to say that upfront, that I don't think that, you know, this side's good and this side's bad. I think we're all kind of, you know, trying to get to the same place. And this is going to take consensus building, it's going to take reaching out to the different stakeholders, finding the common ground, and building on that. I also am not going to have any hard and fast conclusions today. I have some thoughts, though, that I want to convey, and maybe some things to look at. First of all, I think that there's two different issues here that are getting confused, but that in some ways have to be dealt with a little bit separately. And one is the issue of windows in general, and what we do going forward, and how much we regulate and how much we don't regulate. The second is what we do in general about homeowners who have either bought a house that had work done illegally or have done work themselves illegally. And in some ways, it should really be the same thing, because it's not up to the city to be detectives and try to suss that out. As much as I have gotten complaints from people that have had planning come and tell them that they have a violation, where they didn't know they had a violation, I've had a lot more over the last year of emails from people. In fact, I'd say it's probably the single thing I get more emails about than anything else, is a constituent who's noticed building going on in their neighborhood where they know that it's not permitted. It's a problem in this city, and I'm sure it's a problem in many cities, but I like to think that it's more of a problem here because people care more here about their neighborhood. But that's an issue. And because of that, it makes me a little nervous when we talk about blanket amnesties, blanket forgiveness, because if we're going to forgive the windows, and I'm not saying we shouldn't find that place where we, maybe there is some of that, but if we do that, what then do we say to the people that have added the extra room, the extra square footage, converted that garage, put the room under the swimming pool patio, or whatever it was without permit? And that's a concern, and I don't know the answer to that. But that's why, when I start hearing about amnesties, it makes me nervous. I don't know where we draw that line, and if we're going to draw it now, why not for the next issue? Why not for the next one? Why do we have permits at all? Also, I have to say that my sympathy for people only goes so far, because at this point, I would think that if you were smart enough to buy a house, go through the escrow process, fill out all that paperwork, you'd realize that at some point, you should at least check to see if you need a permit when you're going to do work yourself. Now, it's one thing if, and I understand if you bought something and you really thought that all the permits were there, that's a slightly different situation, and it's hard to research all of that. But that's why I think that for at least one of the three homeowners who are here today, that having that point-of-sale inspection would have helped you. You would have known going into it, and they're nodding their head for the people at home who can't see it. I don't quite understand the Realtors' assertion that that would cause a lot of damage. I'm willing to hear more about it, I'd like to hear more about it in the future. Pasadena has it, I don't think that home sales in Pasadena or prices in Pasadena have plummeted because of it. For me, as a homeowner, I know when I bought my house, I would have loved to have someone from the city come in and tell me if there were violations. I mean, as a buyer, that's something that I could have used for leverage, I could have worked something out with the seller, I could have at least known what I was getting into. So to me, providing more information to someone is a benefit. So I find myself without, now I haven't heard the details, I'm willing to listen, but just from hearing it upfront, it sounds like a very attractive option for me. So what do we do? So going forward with the windows, now, this is the other thing that's, you know, it's an issue, it's always going to be an issue, is where you draw that line between people's rights with their property and the community's rights to protect their neighborhood. And they overlap, because as much as I think that I want to be able to do whatever I want with my property, I don't live in a bubble, and what I do to my property does affect what happens to the rest of the block, it changes the aesthetics of the neighborhood, it can change the values of a neighborhood. It's one of the reasons I chose to buy in Glendale. I drove up to my area in Glendale and said, my God, this gorgeous neighborhood, it's so intact, it's so original, it's beautiful. Well, I didn't buy in a lot of other places, and I'm tempted to name them, I won't name them, but suffice it to say that it doesn't take a lot of driving around Los Angeles. Even in some of our very close neighbors, sometimes you cross the line from Glendale into other neighborhoods, and you can tell because they live in an area where it's not regulated, where as long as you're within the building envelope code, anything goes in terms of aesthetics. And so in that neighborhood, you see entire houses stuccoed over, all the windows replaced with flush-mounted vinyl. And so what does that do to the one nice house on the block? It kills their property value. So you can't tell me that allowing people to do whatever they want doesn't affect their neighbors. It just doesn't. And in this city, we have decided to have design review and to have that process. Now, if we want to take that up, if you really think that there's a groundswell of people that are against that, we should talk. But we have that process. And I have a little bit of historical perspective on this issue that is a little different from the rest of the council, because I sat on that joint design review board hearing where we talked about windows. And the reason that we made the recommendations to city council to come up with a set of window guidelines for the city so that they could administratively permit them over the counter if they were of a certain type of window, is because we were finding that in the designer review board, we were being stricter than what the city was permitting. So someone would come into us proposing a new house or a remodel of a house, and we were looking at their house and saying, okay, your house is X-style, so we want you to have X-type of windows to go along with that style. Fine, but what about the guy that already owned X-style house? Well, why was it fair for them to go into the counter at planning and say, I want to put a Y-style window on my X-style house? And planning to say, okay, when the guy who went in front of the designer review board couldn't do that? So we felt that it needed to be brought together. So the designer review board sat down with planning, and they helped develop these guidelines to say, on this type, on X-style house, we believe that these seven types of windows are appropriate. On this tile of house, you have this tile of windows. Now, planning can give people permits over the counter for these windows for these houses without them having to come in front of designer review board, and it's all going to be consistent. So you're not penalized, you don't have to spend more money if you go in front of designer review board than if you just went in front of the planning desk. So as long as we have design review, we have to have window standards. Otherwise, you just have this inequity. And you might say, well, maybe designer review shouldn't be looking at windows. But then I'd say, don't have designer review, because windows are such an integral, important part of a house. They really make the difference a lot of times between a house that looks right and a house that looks wrong. And you can tell that by driving into some of these neighboring communities and seeing where all the craftsmen's now have these flush-mounted vinyl windows and what those neighborhoods look like. So that's kind of how this all came about, and why I think it's very important going forward, that we do have this set of standards. And again, for people who maybe are coming in late or didn't watch the presentation, we're not saying you can't do vinyl, we're not dictating that you have to have wood or any particular material, just saying, here's a bunch of materials and types of windows that we think are acceptable for different building styles. If you want to go outside of that, you can still go to the designer review board and plead your case. But if you want to just get the easy over-the-counter permit, that's what you need to do. I think that the staff's done a very good job at coming up with lower-cost alternatives, being that you can use vinyl in a house that otherwise the designer review board might say they want wood, and looking at some of these other options. And Mr. Acasio brought up a good point about explaining the benefits of repair rather than replacement. A lot of times, people are kind of sold a bill of goods by window contractors that may or may not be correct. So we need to do more outreach to people, and we need to do more education. But I think going forward, that if we're going to have design review, we need to have window guidelines, and I think that this is a very good set of guidelines. Maybe not perfect, I'm certain, think some of the examples could be better, and, you know, certainly there's going to be some give and take there, but I think it's a very good start. So what do we do now about all the people that have those other windows? And I'm not sure, because again, there's people that neighbors called about, maybe a month ago, maybe a year ago, maybe two years ago, that are in that process. Do we tell those neighbors who called, you know what? Yes, you went through the process, you paid the extra money for your windows, and your neighbor did it on a Sunday illegally, knowingly, but we're just going to tell them it's okay? I'm not comfortable doing that. So I don't know where we draw that line. We need to be flexible, we need to be fair. I'm against a survey, I mean, I'm not going to go to that point, I don't think we should for a variety of reasons. So I don't know if there's a middle ground between option five and maybe continuing with some of the cases that are being enforced on, but being reasonable and being flexible and providing low-cost alternatives. You know, I'm not sure how we're going to handle that, but that's kind of where I am at right now, and I hope that that explains a little bit more of my thought and where I come from on this issue. So with that, any other comments?
You have our direction, I guess.
Mr. Drayman, was that a finger going up?
It was, I started to put my hand up, and then I saw Mr. Higani's hand go up, and I didn't know if you did, so. Anyway, I neglected to mention, and I do agree with you, my, whatever issues I have, they're not with the concept of whether we have guidelines. And that the guidelines are clear, concise, equitable, et cetera. And as a matter of fact, I really didn't get into that part of the checklist, so to speak. Thank you for doing that, by the way, it's very helpful. It was, the issues and the concerns I have have to do with enforcement, and how we go about that, what the mechanisms are, and where we draw the line between moving forward and dealing retroactively with what has gone before. And again, I want to be very clear, I'm not suggesting that it can't be done, I'm suggesting that I'm not comfortable yet with what I'm seeing. And I'm uncomfortable enough with what is presented in terms of those limited options to be able to say, yeah, I want that one. There's some, for me, there's some tweenies there. It's not quite this, but it's that, it's, you know, and one of the key factors that's missing for me are some of the costs and some of the processes that would have to take place if we're going to actively go back to correct what I do think is a problem aesthetically, and the aesthetic is not unimportant, it is important. But there's also, at what cost? At what cost, not only in terms of dollars and cents, but at what cost to the, what kind of convulsion, if you will, we create within our own city to get there? Is there another way to do it, in other words? Is there another way to do it, in other words? I don't want to lose sight of what occurred with regard to fences. No matter how you feel about it, fences, no fences, appropriate, not appropriate, appropriate with this caveat or that, I don't want to rush into something that is going to create an absolute convulsion in our city over this. So I need to hear more.
Mr. Weaver.
About the same thing. Need the design guidelines. Sure, I wasn't arguing that point at all. It's the amnesty issue and the enforcement issue. I can't, don't know if I'm speaking for my colleagues, but I thought I heard a majority of us don't want to go out and do citywide surveys. And that's one thing I think you could take out of us here, if I'm right. But others, we just need more.
If I may, I will give back to you what I think is possible out of the spectrum of comments that we just heard.
A brave man.
Well, I need to wrap it up so the staff have a sense of what to do next. From what I understand, you would like us to have more discussion with different interest groups from the different sides of the spectrum, and I think that's quite possible. As a way of coming up with an action plan, what I propose that we do, we actually target these different interest groups so they can speak in the privacy of their own roofs. For example, different groups may not feel as comfortable expressing themselves in front of others. And we'll identify the competing interests that may be sometimes opposed to one another. And then after that, when we have a spectrum of ideas, both on with regard to the guidelines and with regard to the enforcement options, we will then go to the two designer review boards and to this planning commission to have more of an opportunity, to have a public forum with those bodies. And then we'll trim down some of these options to, and fine-tune some of them, including price tags and timelines, et cetera, that may be associated with every one of them. I must say that I didn't hear a great deal of enthusiasm on a citywide survey on the windows issues today. So I'm inclined to say that there's not a lot of enthusiasm on that part, and we may even consider that a smaller option to focus on. In the meantime, there are two outstanding factors. One is, what do we do? How do we treat windows from now on? I hear some positive comments with regard to the draft guidelines. If it's the council's desire, we will work with the draft guidelines, as Jay Platt presented them today, in our future window review processes, and we'll learn more about that, and we'll come back to you about that.
I'm just going to stop you, because I wasn't sure. I thought that Mr. Najarian and Mr. Weaver had both basically didn't want to have guidelines for windows, from what I heard. I just want to clarify that.
No, no, Mr. Weaver just confirmed that he's forgotten.
Obviously.
Well, I was talking about the most egregious examples, and we're talking about setting the threshold. So I'm talking about guidelines, but I'm talking about very liberal guidelines. So I'm not saying anything goes.
And I do understand that part. And for us to identify what would constitute the most egregious as opposed to more than that, we would have to work with these some more to kind of, at least be able to put some level of justification why this set of windows would be the most egregious and why the rest of them would not be.
Just to clarify, because now I'm a little confused. So, Mr. Najarian, are you saying the most egregious of the unpermitted windows? Or are you saying going forward to only sort of not allow the most egregious to be installed? We're talking about the guidelines now.
We're talking about what's offensive. And to me, you know, if you asked me for some of the worst examples, it was that one with the Z-bar sort of stuck-up, off-kilter, apart from the stucco, you know, you could see the gaps. That's bad, as far as vinyl goes, as far as aluminum goes, as far as the muttons go. I mean, if you ask me, don't mess with the muttons. I'm perfectly happy with the interior muttons.
So you're fine with, basically, so in other words, you're saying you think that these guidelines are far too restrictive that are proposed?
May need some tweaking.
Well, I'm not sure what was the proposal. I mean, I went through a laundry list of what-ifs. I think many of the guidelines are, many of the points as presented are excessive.
May need some tweaking, of course. That's what I see. Not this, this, and I looked this, so.
I'm just trying to get a, be sure that different, that your comments are being conveyed, you know, correctly, because I was getting a little confused between which was which. Mr. Drayman?
If you're asking, I'm, I'm fine with the guidelines. I support the guidelines. This may be where Councilmember Najarian and I are not in absolute sync on this. And it may be that we should have some more discussion about it, but I'm not so concerned about that in the sense that my concerns are not so much about moving forward. My concern is the enforcement mechanism looking back.
Right.
So in terms of guidelines, I am there.
Yeah, he was asking, he was talking about the guidelines, so that's what I'm addressing, not any kind of enforcement. And I thought that you, Mr. Weaver, I just want to be sure that, you know, staff is hearing us correctly. I thought that you were saying that you didn't think that we should be out there looking at people's windows and telling them what to put in in the future, and...
To a degree, that's where I'm at. Private property rights. I don't like to go chasing, change every window out. Mr. Higani did not talk about telling staff to work on the amnesty issue, because it's really three components.
And I'm just talking about the guidelines right now. That's...
Guidelines, I think they ought to come back to us separately, taking the amnesty and the enforcement separate issues. Just let us go through the guidelines and tweak it if we want to tweak it. Like, I don't like flush windows necessarily, and I don't like stuff from the '60s that are flush. I think it looks ugly.
So it sounds like two, two members, two council members feel that the guidelines go too far, and two are comfortable with them, just so I can characterize it a little bit.
I didn't say too far. I just say some things in there I'd like to talk about, flush windows.
If I may, these guidelines, the draft, working draft guideline that Jay Platt presented today, is more than what we have ever had in terms of our interactions with the community members who've dealt with the window issue. We have, staff has basically been trying to think of ways of dealing with it on the fly. Now, if you, what I hear is that at least two council members might think that the guidelines may be going too far, which tells me that when we come back with the next version of the guidelines, we should come up with at least a couple of options that will give you, you know, as strict, restrictive as these guidelines could be, or something lighter for you to debate and discuss. And we can get public input on those as we go around doing our roadshow, so to speak. But for now, staff would, we have really two options. One would be to start implementing these draft guidelines as a way of guiding the applicants as to how to apply for a permit for windows, or not discuss windows at all. Really, there is no in-between, because this is the most tool we've ever had to work with. And you have the option of telling us, "Don't use anything and just stay off of the windows," and have them get a building permit and move on. But we're telling you that we've been, since 2006, we've been discussing windows. This is the most we have to work with.
I don't know. Don't put words in my mouth. I did not say it went too far. I said, "I want to discuss them more as an isolated item. The design review guidelines, isolated. I just look through, go through each one, say, "We like it. How should we tweak it?" Little discussion, because we spend most of our time talking on the amnesty issue and the enforcement issue, which, to me, there's three components. If we agree on the guidelines, well, everything that comes, anybody comes in for a permit, they have the guidelines. That's the easiest one to get straightened out. And design review would have them, too. Then we can tackle the other two meaty issues. What do we do about the ones that are out there? And how do we enforce the ones that are out there? That's more conversation time than the guidelines, which I support at least 95%.
But they do go hand-in-hand. I mean, if you're setting strict guidelines, it has a very strong impact as to the enforcement end of it.
Well, I don't know that they're too far out there, too outrageous, but I think we could talk about the design first and ferret out those issues. Then you could talk about the enforcement of whatever's in the design guidelines. That's just my opinion.
Okay, Mr. Higani, I'm sorry I interrupted you while you were, you were doing your summation.
Right. So I was suggesting that perhaps we could continue working with these guidelines and refine them and find out where the weaknesses are and come back to you with some suggestions. I haven't started talking about the enforcement with regard to the outstanding cases, such as those that were represented by three speakers. For, on those, I would recommend that we ask the individuals and people similar to them who are dealing with us to bear with us, and we will start looking at those cases to see which one of these cases we can actually find some documentation that shows, yes, indeed, there is documentation that this person purchased the property without knowledge of that, and we can recommend some things on those, and then some we cannot. Otherwise, we'd really, we would have to get some specific direction as to how we would like, you would like us to treat those code enforcement cases that are outstanding.
And another, just one last point. The guidelines are for going forward. Everything that's existing out there now, we can figure out separately.
I personally believe that we should not deviate too much from, you know, what we're doing right now while we're discussing this. In other words, I don't want to say to the community, "You know what? Do whatever you want while we're discussing this. You know, anyone who wants to do windows, do your windows now, because pretty soon, you know, we're going to be forgiving everything." I don't want to give that impression. Certainly, if there's, you know, cases that are more difficult, we can sort of ask them to just sort of, can put them on hold. But I want to, you know, if people are doing things illegally, I still want to continue with the same sort of enforcement that we do with illegal building. I don't want to stop that process. I don't want to give the impression that we're about to forgive all of that. I think it really sends the wrong message, and I want to continue, you know, on that same road while we're having this discussion. Mr. Drayman?
What is the process, Mr. Higani? What do you envision, in other words, this debate on, this discussion we're having right now with regard to the guidelines? I'm trying to factor in what Mr. Weaver is conveying. He has used the phrase, "Looking at the different items and wanting to have the opportunity to discuss them and tweak them," is how you would, if there had been a consensus, wouldn't, what would you do? Would you bring, still, you'd be bringing back that series of guidelines anyway for us, correct?
Yes. We would go to the designer review board, the two designer review boards, and get their final comments on those. And with their comments, we would amend the guidelines as, you know, based on those comments, and would bring you a final version. That's what we would have done.
Which we could chew on and...
And by the way, I don't have a preference whether it goes to planning or not. It may be that going to design review is enough. I'll leave that up to your judgment.
So then, do we deem that a consensus or no? I have no idea where we are. I'm sorry.
Do you feel that you have more direction now than you did at 2:30?
I, no, I do not feel that. To be completely blunt, but I do think that I have a clear sense that at least one of your colleagues is, is not necessarily convinced that going even so far with the guidelines, Mr. Najarian. I don't think I'm hearing that Mr. Najarian is convinced that that's actually the appropriate way to go. I'm hearing somehow, somewhat an interest in maybe stepping back from what we have even been doing so far. But I do hear that two of you would like us to take the next step, and I think, I hear Mr. Weaver saying that he's comfortable enough to allow us to step forward with the guideline, but he, we would like, Mr. Weaver, would like to reserve the right to leave final judgment until after we go through a series of discussions. But I do not hear an objection to implementing these draft guidelines in the meantime. So that's kind of what I'm hearing so far.
I have no problem with that.
Yes.
Take the sign of you.
Mr. Starbord?
As we, as we look at those and begin to try and pair something to bring back to you and discuss with the community, it strikes me, there's, there's three levels we may be looking at in terms of whether we're more liberal or more strict. One is with respect to safety in the building permits. No question about it. Any window installed has to be installed safely, has to have a building permit. And that, and frankly, I think that applies to windows in the past for some distance as well. You can't have a window that creates a life-safety issue in a structure and wasn't originally installed with a permit. Then you really come down to kind of the stylistic issues. One that we heard Jay mention is, if it's, if it's really a window inset within an existing casement, you may want to give more latitude than the folks that are having to rip the casement out and change the structural integrity of the building. That may be a way to approach this, where, okay, if what you're doing is using the existing opening and you're putting something in that, then maybe more latitude and less strictness with respect to style there, more sense of taste, as long as you're not changing the structure so it can't easily be undone by some future resident. And then more strict controls, where somebody's actually changed the openings in the building, especially on a prospective basis.
Let me ask one other question. Possible force to put a moratorium on it on enforcement right now, because I think there's probably cases going on right now.
Well, you heard the gentleman today who would like to, you know, and actually, he's, what I heard was, he's walking down the road to bring his front windows into compliance. He's actually ordered them, obviously will carry some cost with it. Sounded like he's kind of prepared to do it, but wondering now is, maybe I should stop that, because my current windows will be okay.
Mr. Howard?
Couple of points on, let me deal with the latter first. I don't know all the facts of that situation, but it sounded to me as if he already has his permit to do that. And if that's the case, if he's fully permitted, we'd probably treat that as a vested right, if he installs those windows.
No, no, he had, as I understood it, he had windows that were inappropriate.
Right.
He's, he's engaged his contractor in installing windows that the staff feels are okay and would permit them. I think the question was, should I proceed to spend that money or leave the previous windows?
And I don't know if he has a permit issued by the building department and with a stamp from planning. And if he does, I see one person saying yes. And if he does, then more than likely, he's probably got a vested right, and he can continue on.
No, no, no. The question he raised was, he may not want to continue on.
Yeah, he doesn't want to.
Oh, he may not want to?
He may, he may want to unwind it.
And that does get to the second point.
And leave the windows that are out of compliance.
This was my point, that I don't want, I don't want to stop what we're doing while we have this process. I feel very strongly that we, maybe if there are some cases that you really feel are more troubling than others, we can give some latitude and put those on hold. But in general, certainly, when we're catching people in the act, you know, we should be moving forward with the, with the process. If people are out there at this point, doing things on weekends without permits or during the week without permits, we should, you know, I'm not, I am, no way am I going to vote to just say that's okay for a while, or that we're putting a moratorium on enforcing on that. And I think that the cases where people have been caught and that are in the process should also be moving forward. But, you know, that may be different from someone who's got a violation for something that happened 10, 15 years ago. I think those are the types of cases that we might want to wait on. Those are the cases that are more problematic.
That's one problem.
People that are, you know, where they got nabbed in the middle of something, you know, or very recently, I think we owe it to the people who reported them and to the neighbors who, you know, the people who go through the process to continue with this.
Yeah, but how about Mrs. Brown, who's got caught in the middle of this, this war? She, she went to get permits for two new windows, and she did everything right, and lo and behold, they came back to the house and inspected and said, "You've got all these other windows that are no good."
Well, those are, that's what I mean about the case.
If that's unfair, I don't know what isn't.
Well, that's the type of case that I'm talking about that happened, where the violation happened maybe 10 years ago. I think that's a different story. I think that's the kind of thing where, I mean, you either have to have a line like that.
She's been prosecuted right now.
So do you think that, so is your suggestion then that we just allow, we just say, "No, no permits for windows for a while? We're just going to let anyone do what they want?"
No, no, don't go to the extreme, Laura. I mean, I'm talking about someone who's come before us for help. It certainly sounds like she was treated unfairly, either inadvertently or intentionally, and she's come to us for some help. Should we just turn our backs on her?
No.
It certainly sounded like it was an unfair situation.
Yeah, Mr. Najarian, I just said, that's the kind of case that I think that we should put on hold, because the violation that they're citing her for happened about 10 years ago. So I think that in that case, we should take some time and, you know, and work this out.
Those that they're catching red-handed, I mean, let's put it that way, those that are currently, where was this? It was one of these, these options that are currently swapping out without permits. I don't have a problem with ask, putting a stop order on them at that point. But for folks that are, you know, caught in the middle of this right now, I think we have to give them some relief. And there's two or three of them in front of us. Believe me, there's probably 50, 100, or maybe even more behind them in similar situations. This is a tough issue. I mean, it's a very thorny, it's a very tough issue. It's very difficult to be fair and balance the equities. I mean, this is about as, you know, difficult, this is even more difficult than the fences, I think. But I'm not sure where we go, but I just, looking at a few individual cases, my heart goes out to them. And I think we need to, to give them some assistance.
I agree.
But on the other hand, there are those midnight, midnight swappers, the Sunday afternoon swappers. I don't have any, any consolation for them, though. So how do you bring that together to craft something that's fair?
That's the challenge, Mr. Drayman.
I don't know. Mr. Higani, and maybe Mr. Engel may know, too. How many, how many cases of, how many window issues are we currently dealing with?
I...
Right now? I mean, that are, that are being, whether it's Mrs. Brown's situation, or...
Well, Mr. Ingalls is, Mr. Ingalls is telling me somewhere between 50 and 100 cases across the board of the different types of window situations we're dealing with.
Well, I'm not...
This isn't the council meeting. This is the carryover of our study session.
Ms. Madam Mayor Protim, I am, I'm, I am not supportive of a moratorium on our existing guidelines. However, it is in, and I don't say however to say now I'm going to... I think we should be continuing with our current enforcement. However, it is not inconsistent with things we've done related to fences, trees, and other things, that where we see we have a problem, you know, and there's some concerns about all the aspects of it, that we, you know, put an asterisk there and say, these cases, let's put them aside until we sort out enforcement and, and guidelines. So if it were hundreds and hundreds of them, I would say, okay, you know, that may be a little problematic, but that, we've done this before. And, and it usually happens, and it's not willy-nilly. It happens when, when the level of confusion over city ordinance, confusion about the appropriate enforcement, et cetera, rises to a level that we need to stop for a minute and clarify what, what is happening with the policy before we tell staff, finish adjudicating, if you will, these cases. So I don't think we should be saying, you know, anything goes for now, but I, for those 50 to 75, or whatever it is, I think we, we need to start sorting through that, or, you know, putting a hold on it until we know where our policy is.
Mr. Starbird?
I was having the same sort of sidebar with Hassan, and that is, again, looking at the eastern standpoint, if they've been in place, if they're in the pipeline, but they weren't caught red-handed, they're just there, the circumstances you heard today. If they're not in compliance with the safety code, they have to address it, style issue or no style issue. If they're caught red-handed, then they've got both a safety issue, building permit issue, as well as a style issue. If they want to proceed, they have to conform with the guidelines.
And if you say red-handed, does that include what, they finished last weekend, or, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or tomorrow.
Or we're cited sometime.
And then for the, then for the ones that, that there's not a building permit issue, I mean, they can get a building permit retroactively, they've been installed properly, they, they can show that, yes, they're safe, they meet the code. But it's really just a style issue, you hold on those until we've resolved this.
Okay. Mr. Howard?
Ms. Madam Mayor Protim, members of council, in fact, the one or two cases we currently have pending in our office, that's exactly what we're doing. Councilmember Drayman and Councilmember Najarian were spot on, as they say. The cases that we have, both of them, I've talked to our code enforcement attorney, they revolve around the kind of Ruth Brown-type of situation. And with those, we're working through the system. If we've already filed on them before, we've realized that there was an issue of where they got caught, we've asked the court to continue the matter, and continue the matter, because we know this matter's coming up, and it ultimately, hopefully, will be resolved. So we are trying to take a light-handed approach, and also make sure that we move it along very slowly within the process to ultimately, until a conclusion is ultimately reached.
Okay, this sounds to me like a very sensible and a sensitive compromise. Meanwhile, and hopefully, we can get through this, you know, in not, the not-too-distant future, so that people can get some closure and some resolution, and it's not hanging out there over their heads, and we can move forward. Now, do I need a motion to adjourn?
If the meeting is concluded, that doesn't seem like it is when it's concluded.
I wasn't going to ask for an adjournment, but I will, if you like. It's just this one small thing I would want to add as a suggestion, not related to windows per se, but procedurally. This is a very difficult thing also to do when we're not a full council, by the way, for a number of the reasons you've seen here. Opinions are split this way and that way. It also, I'm a firm believer in when we go forward into an area that holds a lot of controversy that everybody on this dais we heard from. And, and so I would just, as a suggestion, in terms of calendaring, I think we should have a full council.
Yes.
For issues that are going to, no matter how you feel about the window issue, this is too important to, or less than a full council to be looking at, so.
Absolutely. Mr. Engel, did you have...
I just want to make sure that I'm clear, and that everybody who's watching this, Madam Mayor Protim, is that there's no latitude for, for any window construction or installation to go on without permits or proper review while we're going through this study session. Do I understand that correctly?